Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, Town Staff, Members of the Public, thank you so much for being here. It's always a pleasure. With that being said, would you call the roll, please, Erica?
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Here.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here. Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
A friend of the town, and it's always a pleasure to see him, that's here to do a presentation, our state representative, Mr. Rick Stark. Rick, come on up. It's always great to see you.
Thank you. You know, it's great to know when we have, as we say, we have talent, you know, like the TV show, within our own community. And we have a high schooler here, and I'm gonna give my short phrase about what he's done, but you've got a student who has created an application that people use, I guess, on their cellphones or on their iPads, you know, me, just thinking that anybody who's a teenager is gonna develop this stuff, really has to have talent. Plus, there was an article within the Sun Sentinel or the Herald within the last couple of days that he also makes movies. So you really've got, you know, somebody who's probably gonna be one of our greater entrepreneurs, could maybe be the next Steven Spielberg, very possibly. So can I, should I invite him up here?
Absolutely.
And I want to, I would like to read the award, but I'd like to have him calling up. All right, now, before I do this, are you still 16?
I'm 17.
Are you a senior? Are you a senior?
Yes, I am.
All right, well, when we put this tribute together, he was a 16-year-old and a junior in high school. So now we're in the next school year, and he's a year older, so the tribute's gonna read a little bit different, but let me just read this. It says, "Whereas the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards was created in 1995 by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals to emphasize the importance that our nation places on service to others and to encourage all young Americans to contribute to their communities. And whereas more than 28,000 young people across the country submitted projects for consideration in the 2013 awards program, and whereas building upon the online op guide founded by his sisters Lance Oppenheim, a 16-year-old, now a 17-year-old, resident of Southwest Ranches, and, well, now a senior at Pinecrest School, worked with the Points of Light Foundation and volunteer program engineers to create the op guide app, a free mobile application to help users nationwide find community service opportunities in their areas. And whereas Lance, for this achievement, Lance Oppenheim was named a finalist in the 18th Annual Prudential Spirit of Community Awards and recognized as one of the top youth volunteers in Florida, now therefore be respectfully proclaimed that Lance Oppenheim is recognized for his outstanding accomplishments in the area of community service and is congratulated on being named a Prudential Spirit of Community Awards finalist for the year of 2013." So, thank you very much.
Listen, we talk about this all the time. Our young people are the world's most valuable resource because you're the ones that's gonna predict our future, and I can see that our hands are, that we're in very good hands, Lance.
Well, thank you.
Welcome to Town of Southwest Ranches, and congratulations on this recognition.
Thank you.
If, maybe if we can get, Al.
We can go down there and get a picture, Rick, with you as well. Is that okay?
Bob, 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 would you just grab it with that? If you would, yeah. Thank you.
Just doesn't look as good as it did. Come here, Mayor. Just hold on one second, and everybody comes out. It's called coming directly from work. All right, everybody give me a big smile. Great, there we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Call me during the day. I'll tell you a couple more. No, 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 no. I can't reach that.
I know that we switched things around. I've got an old agenda, Andy, and almost got confused. Don't confuse the mayor. He'll screw things up up here. Okay, item number three, presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Stark was here again. Representative, thank you. We know how hard you work on our behalf, and you're always available. Where did, where did he go? I see him back there again. Does a great job on our behalf. Item number four, discussion and possible action on police services. And with that introduction, with that item, Andy, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, our contract with BSO is currently expired. We're in an extension with them. We've had some very good discussions with both BSO and with the Town of Davie, and I wanted to, certainly in this public venue, share that information with you and bring you up to speed on where we are in that process. And that's not part of my PowerPoint. Never saw that before. So bear with us for just a moment, but I do have a PowerPoint. And Mayor, Mayor, what I have is, I've got two, and I'll tell you what I have in advance before we go through it, as it's coming up. I've got two slides dealing with BSO. One is currently where we are with them right now and what the proposal that we have from BSO is. So I can roll through those. We can talk about those if you'd like. If it's satisfactory to you, Mayor, I'll stop at that point. If there are questions from the Council on the BSO aspect, we'll address those at that point. And I do have three slides on Davie, and I'll go through that and then obviously turn it back over to you for discussion, any further questions.
Perfect, Andy. Thank you.
There we go. That looks much better. Okay, we'll start off currently with BSO. This is the staffing level that we have now. We have a captain, we have two sergeants, we have one detective, and 11 deputies for a total district staff of 15. Per BSO, and this has been one of the issues that we've had back and forth with them, 58% of the time, we have one deputy on duty townwide. So that was something that we knew and they knew we needed to address. The current annual cost is $2,155,000 for that. The offer that we have on the table, and this changed, BSO came back and gave a little bit more to us yesterday afternoon, the staffing model changes, it adds one more deputy. The cost goes to $2,300,000, and the addition of that one deputy allows BSO to guarantee for us that we'll have a minimum of two deputies on shift 24 hours per day. And that's, really, that's where, you're all familiar with BSO, they've served the town for a long time. I just wanna kinda let you know where we are currently, what the offer is from them. If you have any questions at this point on the BSO aspect, I'm happy to address those. Otherwise, I'll go into Davie.
I've got one quick question, Andy, on that.
Yes, sir.
In the past, and I just learned this because I attended the meeting at Don Main's house the other evening, that when the training kicks in or somebody's on vacation, we did not have fill-ins for those.
Well, at the present time, the way the contract exists now, in those situations, if there was training, if there was vacations, if there was workers' comp, that would create situations where we would be short. That's what led to the situations where we have one deputy on duty townwide. Yes. So it's not backfilled from downtown, the staff.
If they're out, they're out. There's no fill-in.
Right. The staffing within our district is within that component, that's all. Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a question on this. This is an annual cost. Is there any escalators involved in this?
Yes.
How does that work?
Actually, both contracts have escalators. I emailed BSO actually late this afternoon because I wanted to just confirm that and get that language, and that came back to me in an email from Ron Gunsberger, and I'll share that with you because I did not have the opportunity to get that into the PowerPoint. But reading from Ron's email, he says, "There are no escalator clauses or caps in the new contracts. The price we offer annually is the actual price. We will present you with numbers and negotiate to a mutual agreement each year based upon the May 1 snapshot used for every contract city to ensure apples-to-apples pricing." So the annual increase would be, we would find out in May, and there'd be a process to go through with BSO to mutually agree upon that number each year.
Here's a question that I didn't know about, that, Andy, it obviously came in late, but mutually agreed upon. What happens when we don't agree? I mean, have they said anything about a process to try and reconcile a non-mutual agreement?
I have not had that follow-up with BSO at this point yet, Mayor. That was, as I said, that email came in this afternoon, and I had not had a chance to address further questions with them on that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions about this, Gary?
Just a general comment. So if I got the gist of this right, is every year, based on what happened on May 1, we're gonna renegotiate the contract. Is that kinda correct?
You would negotiate the increase in the contract, not the terms of the contract itself, but the annual increase, yes.
But, yeah, but you're still renegotiating a contract.
A portion of it, I would say. Yes.
Okay.
Andy, so just to.
Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to follow up on that, is there, I would assume that there would have to be some guidance in the contract to say, this is what the increase is gonna be based on? Is that, is that fair to say?
Generally, that has to do with pension costs, insurance costs, those kinds of things, which are certainly beyond theirs or Davie's control at any point in time. So what those increases are, they don't know what those insurance costs are gonna increase, what their pension contribution costs are gonna be, and so that would be something that they would wanna adjust annually, yes.
So then I guess my question there would be, when we look at that contract, is I would like to see broken out for that discussion, those items that are controllable and those items that are not controllable, that would lead to an increase in our cost. In other words, the things that you're describing are generally uncontrollable, and I understand that, but if there are controllable costs also in there, discretionary spending that will add to our cost, then either those need to be removed or we need to be part of the process of discussing whether those discretionary costs are included or not.
Okay, Vice Mayor, thank you. I know we have a significant BSO presence in the room. I know they're listening to the comments as well, and my guess is they're probably already starting to work on those answers.
Great. The current escalator, I think, is 4%. Isn't it, Andy, with BSO, their contract?
You know, it's an expired contract, Mayor. I looked at that in the past.
The previous contract.
I don't recall at this point off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
I think it's 4%.
Mayor, one other item.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The number you've got here, current annual cost at $2,155,000, that's the new present number we're going by under the extension, but the contract that expired was at $1,999, a million nine.
Coming in September 30, we were at about 1.99 million. This is an adjustment based on the Sheriff's Office budget numbers, what it cost them to staff this district. So we're paying our share, we're pulling our weight.
Any other questions? Okay, Andy.
Okay. Continuing on to Davie, there's a little bit different staffing model. They're looking at having 14 patrol officers, one detective who would serve as our, I'll say, de facto chief here within the building, would be our point of contact, and they would have a police service aide who would be assigned to this building during office hours so that someone would be available for walk-ins and producing reports and those kinds of things. The detective would be certified in animal abuse and neglect investigations. All their officers will be speed and weight measurement certified, and, actually, I wrote CSA here, which is actually a BSO term. The PSA would be assigned to Town Hall, as I said, and assist walk-ins. Their staffing model's a little bit different. They would break the town into three patrol zones, and I have a map of that next. There would be a minimum of one officer per patrol zone 24 hours per day, Monday through Friday. They have lower call volume because they've looked at our calls for service by day of the week and by hours. Based on the lower call volume on the weekends, they would have two officers on patrol at all times. Now Davie's shift structure is a little bit unique. They work a 10-hour shift, and over a 24-hour day, they have three shifts. So there's actually 30 hours of coverage within a 24-hour period. So for every shift change, the last hour of that shift is actually the first hour of the next shift, so you wind up in a position where you've actually got double coverage for a two-hour period three times a day.
So instead of three, you have six?
Correct, correct, in those cases, yes. The map, which is, I know is certainly very difficult to read at this point, but I will tell you, it roughly corresponds with our trash collection zones, where we have Area 1, Area 2, Area 3. So our residents would certainly recognize that within their areas that they're used to, that they would have an officer who'd be basically assigned to them within that period. Cost structure on the Davie contract, the annual cost would be $2,205,248. There are startup costs to convert over to Davie. The startup costs are $425,784, and as I've noted underneath that, and I'll read through it certainly for the sake of the audience who can't read that PowerPoint from where they're sitting, the startup cost is a not-to-exceed number. So assets that are currently owned by the town and are used by BSO would be deducted from that amount. Any hard assets that are purchased, such as vehicles, would be owned by the town. Davie will allow that payment, the $425,000, to be spread over the balance of the current fiscal year, and we've also had some discussions about amortizing that over the life of the contract over five years. All vehicles that they purchase will be SUVs and will be marked for service to Southwest Ranches, similar to the BSO vehicles. The officers assigned to Southwest Ranches will also have appropriate uniform designation so differentiate them from the normal Davie police. And just to give you a sense of the size of the Davie Police Department, I did wanna give you the numbers. Their Davie Police Department current budget is over $39 million. There's 241 people, 175 sworn officers. And Mayor, that's what I have for you, just to outline for you and the rest of the Council where we are in our discussions with BSO and with Davie, and would certainly turn it over to Council for further questions or discussion.
Thanks, Andy. Just to confirm one more, one more time, three zones, three deputies to be assigned.
Officers.
An officer to be assigned to each zone, so three weekdays and two on the weekends.
Right.
And with regards to the startup cost, I believe that the majority of those costs are associated with the purchase of, I think, nine vehicles.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. There would be nine new vehicles that they would need to purchase, and so that is certainly the majority of those hard costs.
And at the end of.
They're looking at whether we lease or buy, and certainly how to make that number more palatable to us. But I did wanna give you, certainly for the purposes of this discussion, a not-to-exceed number.
And at the end of the contract period, those vehicles are ours.
All those assets would be ours, correct.
So since you were paying upfront for assets, it'll be ours.
That would be.
Sometime at the conclusion of the contract.
At the conclusion of the contract, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Council, questions? Steve?
So those startup costs, it almost sounds like those would be recurring costs every four or five years if we were to stay with them? Is that, am I understanding that properly?
As I said before, the majority of that cost is vehicles, and we did ask them in our last conversation what their lifespan is on vehicles, and right now they're getting about eight years out of their vehicles.
All right, okay. And then I guess the same question we talked about before with BSO, as far as an escalator, and what does that look like?
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, actually, we had the same conversation with Davie, or I had the same question for Davie, and the answer from Davie would, the annual increase would be their actual cost in pension costs, insurance costs, et cetera. However, they're willing to put a 5% cap on that per year.
Okay, thank you.
I heard four.
We have.
You got five?
We have a 4% on the fire contract, but I believe they wanted 5% for the police contract.
Any other questions at this time?
There was one other one related to BSO got back to you. What was that other number they brought back to you yesterday or today?
Yeah, this, let me back up to that slide. That's the staffing of 16. Yesterday, that changed. Where we were with BSO previously was in order to get the guarantee of two deputies on duty at all times, we were looking at adding two deputies, not one, and so we were at $2,450,000. Yesterday, they came back and said, okay, if you add one, we go to 2.3, we'll give you the guarantee of two per shift.
So in that presentation, what you just told us, part of the upfront difference there is, we're guaranteed two with the Sheriff's Department, and with Davie, we're guaranteed three.
You would have.
On the road at all times.
The weekends, because Davie has said that it's a little bit slower, you're looking.
Right.
That would be two, but during the week, when they've analyzed, our call volume is higher, yes, three.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Let me ask a question, Andy. On the BSO contract, if, we have two deputies, and they've gotta take somebody, I guess it's downtown now that they've closed, they're closing.
To jail.
Facility, you know, is that, do you still have two deputies back up here, or is that one of?
That deputy would have to go downtown to drop off that prisoner for however long that took, and we would be short a deputy during that period of time.
Okay, and does Davie have the same situation where they've gotta go downtown?
Davie has a holding cell, so.
In Davie?
So arrests that were made here could be dropped at the Davie Police Station, which is significantly closer than heading downtown.
Can BSO drop them at the Davie Police Station? I don't know, I'm asking.
BSO had been partially funding that holding cell, that facility, and that funding has been withdrawn, so I really don't know the answer to that, what that availability would be for BSO at the Davie cell at this point.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, it's just a discussion item, and the discussion items, normally there isn't public comment, but we always violate Robert's rules to get public input because we care about what you think and what you have to say. So if there's anybody here in the audience, we ask you to limit it to two minutes. Normally, it's three. We ask you limited to two minutes. If there's any members of the public wish to comment on these contracts, please feel free to come up.
Hello, I'm Mark Modrich from Rolling Oaks. We had our meeting a couple nights ago, and we discussed this topic in detail, and it appeared that it was nearly unanimous that we all favored going to the Davie Police Department. One of the main reasons was the cost. We do not want to go into our reserves this year and have to look at possible tax increases in the years to follow in order to keep BSO. I like BSO, I think they've done a great job. Over the years, we all got to know the deputies real well. Unfortunately, we don't know any of them anymore, so we've lost a lot of the benefits that we used to have with BSO, including the mutual aid and several other things, which looks like Davie's gonna try to provide with us. So from me directly to you, let's go with Davie.
Thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
It's good to see you again, Mayor. Okay. It's good to see you again, Mayor. Been a long while. My name's Lee Martin. I'm a 23-year veteran of the Broward Sheriff's Office. I'm also the Secretary of the Broward PBA. I started out here in 1991 under Nick Navarro, and I just wanted to run a few things that had happened over the years, just to, that'll kinda highlight how we feel about Southwest Ranches, and we're going back, we were your hometown police department before you had a hometown. So, you know, we're going back in the days when everything was unincorporated. But back in 1991, when I first got on with BSO, we had a gang problem out here with the Davie Boys and the Zulus. I don't know how many of you remember that, it was on Geraldo's show. And now I was out here, because I had CI's out here in Southwest Ranches, and I got tasked by the Sheriff's Office, our command then, to come in here and help take care of that. We did that. We cleaned that out, and that was in 1991, and we were told to do whatever it takes to get these guys out of the area, whatever it took, work with state people, local people. They brought in LAPD gang expert to teach us about gangs, and that's kinda what the Sheriff's Office is about, is kinda leading into the future. Then in about 2003, I was a detective in the Southwest Ranches area, and we had a rash of burglaries that happened, a bunch of Dade County guys coming up, stealing about, I believe about half a million to three-quarters of a million dollars worth of property. And at that time, my boss was Chief Page, who is now a major and here tonight. He called me up in the morning, he said, listen, I don't wanna see your face, I don't see any detectives until we bring those guys back and put them in jail. Took us several weeks down in Dade County, every day in Opelika, and we brought those guys back. And we did whatever it takes for Southwest Ranches, and that's the kinda connection we've had. And then just recently, we rested some guys in progress, and you guys know about that. But we've been your hometown police forever. Nobody knows you guys better than us, and we wanna keep that relationship, and thank you for your time.
Rich Hagan, 14401 West Palomino Drive. I'm not gonna say keep BSO or keep Davie, but you know my opinion, keep BSO. I got a couple of things here you may wanna look at, though, on the proposal. Am I allowed to talk about the proposal? When they say one captain, and the whole deal is, how many more deputies can we put on the road? And I believe this is right, if you look at a captain, and most of the time you have a lieutenant as an XO, I don't know what the difference in the salary is, but we may look at that. You got two sergeants all the time. We could drop it down to one sergeant, have an acting deputy, a senior deputy acting as a sergeant, save us money that way. That's gonna bring at least up to 12 or 13 more deputies back on the road, adding two more deputies in here. What I do see on the Davie staffing is we are getting 14 police officers, but you're getting one detective as an acting chief. Is he qualified as an acting chief? Does he understand what everything's going on in the city? BSO, when the tenants and captains, they've already been trained for this stuff, so we're gaining a lot of assets over here. The CSA or the PSA, they call them now, that's just somebody that sits in the office and may answer the phone once in a while. How many walk-ins do we get here with BSO? You don't get a lot of walk-ins. But that's the only thing I'm gonna say about that. Everything else is certified animal abuse, well, you know, all I'm gonna say is, they have the assets. Anytime we have anything wrong, we can call up in here, the detectives, we don't need something, we just call downtown, and they'll have them here in seconds, you know. That's all I got to say. Look at the difference in, maybe dropping some of that stuff down and maybe putting some more deputies back on the road, and maybe the sheriff come down in the little budget a little bit. All right, that's all I gotta say.
Mayor, Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, and maybe if we can write them down and respond, and as part of the negotiating team, and I know you are as well, we have some insight with regards to the suggestions that Rich had come up with. And those are things, I will tell you, Rich, that were discussed as part of the negotiating session. We'll tell you what happened with that.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. I'm a 30-year resident of Broward County, and I have nothing but respect for BSO. I think that as an organization, they're highly professional, they're extremely well-trained. It's an organization that I think that Broward County and the state of Florida can be very proud of. The concern I have is our sheriff. You know, I'm not from law enforcement, I'm not a politician, I'm a businessman effectively, and I always look at things through that lens. But what I'm seeing is a politician who's stepping on his own toes here in trying to get a deal done. I can't imagine any businessman showing up at the staff or, you know, the resident's home to talk and bash the people that he's supposed to be doing business with. That just doesn't fly, and I don't know how it would fly in politics, I've never seen it done there either. Now, going to residence homes and talking up the plan, the program, all that, that's a good idea, but what happened this week doesn't make any sense to me. Now, the fact that he came down here once to talk about the. Now, the fact that he came down here once to talk about the deal, and he's never met with you all again, even though you invited him to, I don't understand that either. It sounds to me, or it seems to me, that the sheriff is doing his organization injustice by dealing with the town this way. The sheriff ought to be in a closed-door meeting with you, the administrator and the town attorney, working out the brass tacks, coming to terms with the town on what we need and what we can afford, and not sending pieces of paper along without him attached. It's just, it's not good business. It seems he's playing the politics of it, but he's not playing the good business sense of it, and I hope that turns around, because I have no, I have no lack of confidence in Davie. Davie had their issues in the past, can I have another 30 seconds, Mayor? Davie's had their issues in the past, they were in the papers for a long time, they definitely had problems. So has our town. We've all had our issues coming up through Broward County, but, you know, that's all in the past, they seem to have a very good organization. I'd be happy to have them, but I'd hate to lose BSO. But when it comes down to dollars and cents, and our tax dollars, you guys have to do the right thing, you have to get the best deal for the town. And if he's not willing to come to terms with the Davie agreement, I'm going to miss BSO, I really would. I think they do a great job. Thank you.
Hi, Dee Schroeder, 5501 Thoroughber Lane. And I have to agree with Bob, completely straight across the board. I think that meeting was, shouldn't have taken place. I did sit there, and there was some good information that came out. Again, I'm not dissatisfied with our BSO. I think, for the most part, most of those officers do an incredible job, and they deserve all the accolades. As far as the sheriffs, we've gone through a lot of sheriffs, and we've had a lot of problems with the sheriffs themselves. It's not the officers, it's not the organization, it is the sheriffs. And each time they come in, they do the same thing, I'm the sheriff in town, and I'm going to do it my way. And the old way worked, it was great. I had a couple of questions on, as far as the officers on the weekends. It's saying here that they're going to be two officers, and this is for Davie rather than three. So we have three during the week, and just two on the weekends? Is that how it's going to work?
We're going to go, I'm sorry.
You're going to go through all that?
Yeah, we're going to go through that, for, we're writing down your questions, I promise you there'll be answers.
Okay.
But yeah, the answer to that question is yes.
Okay. Another thing, as far as going back to the meeting out at Don Mainz's home, it was a very good meeting, like I said, some of it was very informative. The only thing that I think you guys should be aware of is that it kind of painted a bad picture for the residents, you know, you know, the town attorney was kind of knocked down, there was comments made. I did ask Scott if he was willing to come back to the table and renegotiate, and he said absolutely. Those were his words. But the question to you guys is this, you're out buying something, you can buy whatever you want, because it's your money. Is Scott willing to lose $2 million from his budget? And he will be losing $2 million if he doesn't want to come back and renegotiate. Thank you.
Mayor, Don Mainz, longtime resident of Southwest Ranches, been here from the beginning, live in Rolling Oaks. You know, before we became the town, when we were still going out to get the vote to try to become a town, all these questions came up about who we're going to use for fire, who we're going to use for police, who we're going to use for all the different contracts, because we decided we were going to be a contract town. And we looked at all the different scenarios. But once we mentioned to go with BSO, that was it. BSO was going to be our hometown police department. They were going to be part of the community. When we look at the numbers that we just saw on the screen, it looks to me like it's a no-brainer. I mean, besides the both costs being about the same, you've got an extra $425,000 per startup cost for Davie. And then buying the vehicles, is there going to be another fee to do the maintenance on the vehicles? Is that going to be another charge to the town? You know, I think we have a comfort zone here. You know, besides talking about extra deputies, we've got the deputies in Southwest Ranches, we've got Weston right next door, we've got Cooper City, we're surrounded by BSO. So we have all the deputies at our disposal if we need them. And there have been times where they've been called, and they come in and they've done the job. I mean, at any time, they call the SWAT team, and they come right in from Cooper City. So we are completely covered, whether there's two deputies in town or not, they just make a call and they come over. I mean, we have a feeling of safety, security, and a comfort level with BSO being here. As far as an animal abuse team, the sheriff has agreed, and he mentioned it the other night, that he's going to start a separate squad for large animal abuse, not small animal, which is already covered, but for, you know, horses and cows, with people on it that know about large animals. They've never had that before, but he's putting that together, he said it'll be in place within four months throughout here in Southwest Ranches. And that is something that's a big concern of ours, and we do need that. But I, you know, really, I urge you to, you know, look at these numbers, and I just think it's a no-brainer. Let's stay with BSO. Thank you.
Any other members of the public wish to comment? Ask her.
Astronaut, 5480 Southwest 178th Avenue. I have been listening to a lot that's been said tonight, and I've heard a lot of stuff before this. However, looking at the presentations, it seems to me that what we're getting from Davie is still a better deal than what BSO is willing to give us. And like Bob says, BSO has been great for us over the years, and we'd hate to lose them, but we have to look at the dollars and cents, and we also have to look at the coverage we're getting. Because unless they're prepared to give us the same coverage, or similar coverage to what Davie's offering, then I think Davie's a better deal. And for the cost also. So we have to consider all of these things. And I leave it up to you to go through everything, go down the lines and see where it's best for us. We have to do what's best for us in the long run, and it's our cost. So we have to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You want to go twice, huh, Rich? Real quick, though, you got to go real quick, I don't do this.
One quick question, I just heard that we were going to purchase our own vehicles and everything. Who's going to ensure that? Is Davie going to put it under their policy?
We're going to answer.
Or are we going to put it under our policy?
That was part of the questions that I know Andy is writing down, we do have an answer to that question as well, okay? Any other questions, anybody you'd like to have answered while we, while you have an opportunity? Okay. All right, we're going to turn it back over to you, but before I do that, Andy, if you'll go through those questions, and if need be, I'll maybe provide a little supplemental information as well. I suspect I won't have to, because you've been part of those negotiations throughout the process.
I'll do my best, Mayor, I think there were three issues. It was mentioned different staffing models and rearranging kind of who does what. I just want to assure the public that, and the rest of the council, that we had those discussions with BSO, we discussed all sorts of different staffing models, numbers of sergeants, lieutenants, officers in charge with deputies, there were a lot of different discussions we had. The model that we've come to is what BSO was most comfortable with.
Just to add to that also, Andy, one of the things that we had requested, and I know you remember this, to put more deputies on patrol, because that was important to us, more boots on the street, you know, the visual deterrent, the contact with the residents, and just projecting an image. We had asked BSO to get in touch with Weston, maybe Cooper City, that in lieu of the captain and the two sergeants, we didn't have any issues with them being consulted in the event that there needed to be some information associated with, you know, decision-making or supervisory scenarios. And they came back and told us that neither would agree to that. So that was also part of the discussion, we didn't have any problem utilizing the other municipalities with in close proximity their supervisory or command staff.
Okay, the next question or issue that was brought up was the staffing with Davie, which had three, one per zone, three on patrol Monday through Friday, 24 hours a day, two on weekends. Those numbers were based on analytics that Davie had done, they had looked at our call volume per day of the week and per hour of the day. So they had the hard numbers of what calls we've had for service, and so the staffing that they had set up was geared around those calls for service. That would be something that they would look at on a regular basis and alter staffing if they needed to. The last question was on the vehicles, the insurance, the fuel, those costs, that would be all handled by Davie as part of the contract.
Did we miss any questions? Council?
Mayor?
Turn it over to you, and we'll continue this and answer any additional questions, and I think we all have, I have a few comments as well, but go ahead, Doug.
A couple of things. This negotiation started, I think, about the time, Andy, when you came on board, is that about how long ago this goes back to?
Well, our contract with BSO was expiring September 30th of last year, and so we were working on negotiations then. Then we got into the election cycle, Sheriff Israel against former Sheriff Lambert, and so there were some issues there that kind of delayed our contract negotiations. Sheriff Israel, although elected in November, didn't take office until January, was kept out of the building there, so he didn't get exactly the best running start. So we've had, as you all recall, multiple extensions of that contract, yes.
So, I guess the other thing is, being as long as it's been, this should have been put to bed quite some time ago, personally. Shouldn't have gotten this far, shouldn't have gone this far down the road. We've kicked the can down the road for too long. And I think not being involved in the negotiations, but knowing that the people at the top, that they were changed on the mayor and the attorney a variety of different times along the way, when we did start negotiations, that the same people weren't involved, oh, you're dealing with this person now. So, I'd like you to just confirm that when you speak. So, the relationship, the Sheriff's Department's done a great job with us, we greatly appreciate it, we love you guys. We were amiss when we lost a couple of, some of our regular guys that have been here. We do not have the same relationship that we had previously with you guys. I don't know where the disconnect is, or what happened, but there's a disconnect. So, we had a more hometown feeling before, and we've lost that over the last year or so, maybe a little longer. And there's a handful of guys that are still here, and they're great, but the new guys, we don't get to know as much unless you have an incident, you're out there in contact with the residents, and everybody I know loves you guys. So, in that regard, there's no question about it. The disconnect part, the negotiations, the contract moving forward, the numbers, we've already set our millage rate, we can't raise it now. So we're stuck with a certain amount of money. And when the sheriff was here speaking at the town council previously, he said, it is what it is, you can either afford us or not afford us, basically. And we have an obligation to the residents to get them as much bang for the buck and manpower on the street as we could get. So, and sitting at that meeting the other night at Don's house, you know, that was great they gave the public, but the way they, he slammed the town attorney was a little, a little much, to say the least. And a little bit about some of the issues related to the horse that got slaughtered, and the letters the mayor got recently, and some different events that have happened. But the thought here is that we only have so much money. And we would love to keep you guys, but, you know, we're not getting, you guys are the Rolls Royce in the industry, other people call you the Cadillac, but you're not, you're the Rolls Royce. And I would say Davie would be the Cadillac in this scenario. And we had a lot of concerns when we went from the Sheriff's Department for the police and fire, and we went to Pines, that we weren't thrilled about it, but we made that change, had that agreement, and we since made the change from Pembroke Pines to Davie, and there was even more concerns related to how that transition would go. And that has worked wonderfully. We haven't had any complaints, no issues related to the fire EMS with Davie. So, one would think, from that experience, that we should have a similar transition if we go that direction. The next part is, is that Davie knows our town quite a bit anyway, because Davie's in the middle of our town, they're on both sides of 75, and they have a fire department right there, so it's not like we're, if we make this change, that we're bringing in somebody that doesn't know us. So, I want everybody to realize those items and those changes that we've already been through. Now, back to what was something Don Mainz said earlier, back when we first, before we incorporated, it was just the Sheriff's Department out here, we didn't have an option, it was against the law to go with anybody else, there was no approval or whatever, that you could go there. So it was, the sheriff was the only option back then, we had no other availability to use anyone else. So, that worked, and that was good, but I just want everybody to realize, there were no options back then, it was you, whether we wanted you or not, it had to be you back then, back in that time. But I'm a little remiss that the breakdown's been so severe as far as moving forward with this contract and trying to get answers. You know, so I've got to tell you, me personally, I'm clearly leaning towards Davie for bang for the buck, more manpower on the street. You guys have been out here, you know our crime problems, what we had from the sheds being robbed, vehicles being stolen, landscaping equipment being, sheds and bards broken into, animals slaughtered, you know, it just goes on, lower units on boats stolen, boats stolen, just on and on and on. And we have actually increased, for a period of time there, an additional amount of money to put more men on the street to help resolve that. And it's in waves, it kind of comes and goes, so I don't know what the status has been lately. But I don't know about the rest of the council here, but we had, when things would happen, we had better communication from our staff even to each of us. We would get a text to keep us up to date, not that we don't get it from Andy, because Andy keeps us up to speed with what's going on, but previously with the sheriff, with whoever was in charge here, we would get an email or a phone call and say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what happened, or whatever, whether it was be that car accident out on US 27 that killed that woman, or whatever the case may be, or the robbery that you guys just arrested those four guys, which was a stupendous job. So, the disconnect's been kind of across the board, so, but I want you guys to know that we think highly of you, you're wonderful, or whatever, but I got to tell you, I'm leaning towards Davie, so I'm interested in the rest of your comment.
Thank you, Doug. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, when I look at this, at this decision, I think from, it's probably one of the most important decisions that we are called upon to make, and so certainly, it's one of those decisions that we want to make sure we dig into and make the right decision. I want to follow up, Doug, on kind of what your statements are, because I feel very similar to what you just expressed there, that when Commander Jarborough, Commander Jarborough was here, you know, I felt like I had conversations with him all the time, I knew most everybody that was on his staff, and there was a real close partnership between what the town was doing and what he was doing. Commander Hayward was very good, but it wasn't quite to that level. Commander Canada Stuck was, did a fine job, fine individual, but it wasn't at that level anymore. And so it's been something that over time has drifted and drifted, and what started out as a partnership, as somebody that was part of our town, now feels to me more like a contract, frankly. And it feels like somebody that I no longer, I no longer know, they don't know me, I don't know them, you know, even showing up at the HOAs, I don't see it as often and as thoroughly. So it just, it just seems like that that communication has broken down, and that's worrisome to me, because I think that's one of the most critical things about working together, is that you know us like the back of our hand, you know, back of your hands, you know? So that really is worrisome to me. So, that really is worrisome to me. When I look at, and I have not been part of the negotiation, but when I look at how the negotiation has gone on, to me, the negotiation itself is a microcosm of the relationship. I cannot imagine us going through what we just went through four years ago or five years ago, from a negotiation standpoint. You know, we had things promised to us a year ago that have been pulled out from under us. The additional deputies that were assigned to the unincorporated areas. That was, that was something that was promised to us. Where did it go? You know? How can we, how can we have a negotiation going on where you make a promise and then the next time you talk to it, it's not there anymore? You know? We're dealing with an organization. I know that the sheriff changed between the one and the other, but does that, is that what that means? That every time there's a political shift in the wind, that our relationship changes? It's very worrisome to me. It's very worrisome to me. We've got the safety of our residents at hand, and I can't, I can't feel like every time there's a political shift, that that safety is on the line. It's very worrisome. So, when we go through this, and frankly, at this point, you know, the relationship between the sheriff and our town, I hate to say it, but I don't think it's ever been worse. You know? I mean, there, how can, how can we have a meeting where the sheriff is there denigrating the officials of our town? Our mayor, our town attorney? How can you do that and then ask us to place our trust into that organization? Does that make any sense? I have a very, very hard time with it. I have all the respect in the world, and I mean this sincerely, it may sound like it's just words, but I mean this incredibly. These deputies from BSO have put their lives on their line for 13 years, for longer than 13 years, but 13 years that we've been incorporated in town. And I can't tell you the respect that I have for that. They are incredible individuals, but we've got to work as a team. Or if we don't work as a team, then it all crumbles. So, and I got to tell you, right now, we're not working as a team. So, I'm looking for something for you all to prove to us that you can work as a team. And part of that, frankly, is I want you to live up to what you said in the early negotiations. If you're telling me that what was promised to us in the early negotiations is no longer on the table, then that tells me that every time there's a political wind, we can't trust what we heard before. So, that's one of the bellwether things I'm listening for, I'll tell you that right now, to see whether that, whether you live up to what you promised in the negotiations or whether you're not going to live up to that. That is one of the key bellwether things that I'm listening for. On the other side, you know, we have Davie. It's, I have all the respect in the world for the Davie organization, the individuals there. I think that they are, you know, a, based on what we've seen from the fire standpoint, that has raised my comfort level in going with Davie immensely. I, so, I certainly am very comfortable there. I think that we are very fortunate as a town. Let me, let me close with this. I think we are very fortunate as a town to have two quality organizations to have at our availability to go with. I don't think that there is a bad choice among the two of them. I, I think that, I think we're fortunate in that, in that session. And I am hoping, I am hoping that what we're seeing here is not, is not the final. I'm hoping that there is some more negotiation to come, and we will have a clear consensus and a clear winner on who we think we should go with. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Gary?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming. You know, I too echo those same sentiments. It appears that BSO administration, not the rank and file, not the guys that are out there pounding the pavement, they put their lives on the line for us. And boy, do I appreciate that, let me tell you. But it appears the administration has turned into some sort of a political entity. And I don't think you should put politics with public safety, and not at our residents' expense, any way, shape, or form. And that's what's happening here. And we need to remove that somehow, some way. I mean, if we got to, the proposal is we got to renegotiate the contract, and let's not kid ourselves, we got to renegotiate the contract every, every year. You know, to go through that every year, that doesn't fly, you know? It just doesn't fly with me. I mean, since I've been on the council, we've gone through four commanders. BSO right now is a revolving door. I don't know, I don't know how to explain it to anybody any better. There, everybody that we've known, and I, you know, we got spoiled with Commander Jarboe and Deputy Lee and all those, we got really spoiled by them, because they really made us feel like the hometown, and you know, the wide open spaces, and you know, they were out there rounding up cattle if they needed to and doing whatever, whatever the job took, they did. I'm not so sure that, that culture applies right now. I see a completely different culture out there. And, and I'm not real happy with it. It's not us, you know? And I'm not so sure this is a good fit anymore, and I'm really on the fence with this. You know, it's, everybody we know's been replaced. And they've been replaced twice. It's not just once. It's been several times, you know? And I don't want to, I don't think we should have to go through this every election cycle if there's a new sheriff in three years and, you know, that sort of thing. And the politics is just coming through in a very, very detrimental way, you know? And I, you know, I've been listening to everybody and, you know, we love BSO. We've had them out here since day one, since I moved out here 23 years ago and new officer, Deputy Lee. And, you know, you'd get a knock on the door before you, your kid was in trouble before you got a, you know, before you got a call from downtown or wherever it was, you know, to come get them, you know, that sort of thing. I mean, that was the kind of hometown feel that we had, we had, and we've lost it all. It's gone. Let's face facts, it's gone. We need to get it back somehow, you know? And if that means we need to look, take a really hard look at Davie, you know, so be it. You know, Davie's pretty big in the animal end of things, just like we are. There's no, no, I don't think there's going to be any loss in detail if we go in that route, you know, something to that effect. You know, I, in the last couple of weeks, I mean, this is coming to a head here, obviously, but in the last couple of weeks with the negotiations, this has been dragged out and dragged out and dragged out by BSO. We've had so many extensions, I can't see straight on that. And, you know, we need to finalize this kind of thing. And, you know, we're here at the point we are today because of all those extensions, because we can't get anybody to the table. I'm not part of the negotiating team, so I'm kind of sitting a little bit outside of it. And, but, but it's a little exasperating to see all this, you know? And when I start getting emails from the residents to threatening legal action and economic action, sanctions against the town and things of that nature, you know, you're wondering where the politics is coming from on this and where did, where did the public safety start and stop, you know? And it doesn't, you know? The public safety is paramount, but the politics all of a sudden are starting to come in all over the place. And I really think we need to really take a really, really hard look at what we're looking at here, because, you know, it's all brand new, BSO and Davie. They're both brand new at this point. And if we're going to do a fresh start, we need to do it now, in my opinion. That's it for my.
Thanks, Gary. Freddie?
Mine's going to be pretty short. I hope y'all heard a lot of it before what I was going to say. But when I was sitting here listening to this, I started thinking back, Broward County, Sheriff's Department. You know, I bought my property here in 1965. I've been, I did move out here till 82, but I was out here from 65. We started raising cows in 65. And we were part of Broward County. There was no if, ands about whose police department was Broward County. When we incorporated, it was Broward County. We were Broward County, we just shifted over, and everything was fine. But what was happened, now, we're a small town, we don't have any money, and we're at the mercy of our foreign police, which we need desperately. And very fortunately, all our choices are good. I don't think there's that much difference in any department. They all got good people, they're well-trained, they got the best equipment, so we're in a good position. When we make a, when we make a choice, you know, it may hurt somebody's feelings there, but we're going to end up with a good police department and fire department. But when this thing became a head, we were told that Broward County couldn't provide the service we needed with the amount of personnel. We had a choice. What do you do? Broward County was going to go up on our money. We don't have the money to pay what we're paying now, now they want more. So, what did we have to do? We looked around and found out that Davie, you know, I haven't seen the actual figures, but I think we actually got more residents living in our city limits that belonged to Davie than we'd have our own people. Because, you know, somebody's place has got six units to an acre. I've never seen the figures, but it's a lot. To me, that black and white car is going to be all over this town, because they got people around this town. So, it's to our option, if we take them, we're going to get more visitors. It's going to help us. We're going to get the people we need. And like I say, as I've known all these people, these guys, let me tell you something. I can remember when I first come out here, and I think Lee was here in 65, I think it was. Every time I turned around, Lee was coming up and down my street saying how things were going and everything. But like I say, many a nights, I'd get a call from George. "We got some cows out ready." And when I got there, George was there helping us put them back in the fence, you know? And I hate to hurt people's feelings, but we don't have a choice, people. We're at your mercy. We have to have, and we're not like Pembroke Pines, Weston. They could, they could do their own police department if they want to. It's economically feasible for them to go with where they want to. We don't have that choice, people. There's no way we could have our own police department, no way we could have our own fire department. So, we ever have to ask you people to look the other way a little bit, look at your budget, see if you can help us out a little bit. And it looks like, right at the present time, Davie's doing a little bit more than Mr. Israel was doing, and I think I'm going to have to go that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. Vice Mayor, Council, I appreciate your comments, and I know where that comes from. You guys have been here for a long time, but we all know that the town of Southwest Ranches is a very unique and has a unique personality. And going back to, you know, the Jarboe days, the relationships that he established, it was, it was fun, not only going to, you know, these meetings, but over there, it was just fun, that we might, you know, disagree, but he knew the personalities, he knew the people. He provided his cellphone. He just seemed like he was always there, available, and reconciling the different personalities that exist here. And whether you agreed or disagreed, you know, he always left with mutual respect. Or, you know, Deputy Roselli, it was fun sitting, you know, watching him back there communicating and yelling out loud, "Quiet, please, quiet!" You know, but, and we were quiet, they were quiet, but it was, it was fun, the respect and admiration and the relationships that he had developed with our, with our residents. And it was just something that was very, very special. Listen, he's pulled people over and given them tickets and held them, you know, accountable. And you just walked away, "Yeah, you're right, Deputy Roselli, I was speeding, I deserved this, this ticket," and off we went, you know? That son of a gun, that no-good SOB. And Sergeant McCormick, you know? I would see Sergeant McCormick, you know, he's out there driving around. I would see him three, four, five times a day, you know? Honk his horn and pass by and wave. And I would get comments from the residents in the community, you know, that, you know, we appreciate it. You know, this visual deterrent, when you have, you know, people out there, means a tremendous amount, you know? People that are attempting to do the wrong thing or engage in criminal activity, you know, this visual deterrent that certainly can be, you know, present in the community has a lot to do with, with crime issues and stuff. But let me also say with regards to BSO, I mean, some of my dearest friends, and I say this with Chief Page, we've known each other for a long time, long time. And again, a dear friend and just a tremendous amount of respect with regards to you, your profession and the things that you do. I mean, I can name person after person that I've developed relationships that are just dear friends of mine, that, that just do such a wonderful job and have such a good relationship with, with them. And that's something that I will never forget and always appreciate, you know, is those relationships. But I got to tell you, with regards to the atmosphere and the environment that exists now, it just doesn't feel the same. It's just not the, not the same. One of the most important things that any municipality can have is, is fire, EMS, and police services. The health, safety, and welfare of our residents is first and foremost. There's no question about that, and that won't be compromised. And, you know, compromised to a point, obviously, from the town of Southwest Ranches, you know, we have limited financial parameters, and there's only so much and so many things that we can do. And we're lucky to have, you know, Davie now that's, that's part of this, this negotiation, because there's a whole different, you know, perspective. And there's been some unique things that's been introduced as part of that, part of that process that certainly, in its first presentation, are very appealing to me. You know, I want to thank BSO, you know, for the time that has been spent as a part of this negotiation process. We've spent many, many hours at the table. And some very constructive, some more constructive than others. Sometimes our emotions get to us, and that's okay, understand that. But it was always respectful. We walked out, you know, that door was always, always a handshake. And then, we moved on to the, the next issue, the next negotiation, and it was out on the table with regards to how do we get this reconciled, and where do we go from here? With regards to the timeframe, I think we've gone through eight or nine different extensions to the contract. And I think some of it has to do with the environment, atmosphere that existed at that time. A very, very important component is, you know, our thoughts back then about the potential to negotiate with another service provider. And we were waiting on the Attorney General's opinion, that took some time, and it confirmed what Keith believed was indeed, you know, the law that existed at this time, and that is a confirmation that municipalities can contract with other local municipalities to provide police service. And we just got that within the last couple of weeks. So, certainly, that delayed the, when I say delayed the negotiations, the negotiations were going on, we still had conversations with Davie at that particular time, but it delayed it and extended it, because we were waiting for confirmation of what we'd believed to be was the truth all the time. This isn't about politics, it's not influence, it's about reality. It's about one of the most important services that a municipality can, can have. And I got to, I got to tell you, especially as late as it was, as late as it is as part of this negotiation process, I was disturbed about the format. I was disturbed about what transpired. I too was disturbed about the bashing of Keith and some issues concerning myself. You know, you get the impression, quite frankly, when you hear those things, that you're really not, not wanted. And the sheriff, by his own confession, he was here and said, "I think at that particular time at a meeting, I don't know, a month or a month and a half ago, you know, that it is what it is, this is what we have to offer, we'd love to consummate this relationship, but we understand that if you decide to go with somebody else, the transition will be seamless, and we'll be here to, to cooperate." Another very, very disturbing thing as part of this process that, that I found out as part of these negotiations, and I guess that it was something that was introduced as a push to hire additional deputies, and that was the safety, the safety issue, that almost 60% of the time, at least last year, it's my understanding, almost 60% of the time, we all... we only had one deputy patrolling the town of Southwest Ranches. We had one deputy. That absolutely, to me, is unacceptable. No matter what the feedback was, no matter the reasons why we only had one deputy, but it's totally, totally, totally unacceptable. And while I know that there is some language, condition of the contract, that maybe that was a possibility, I have to tell you that I was just shocked when I heard that. When we go out and we contract for services and we make a commitment that this is what the organization, the personnel structure is going to be, that's what I expect to be out in the street, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Because in my mind, that's what was committed to. I don't, you know, the scenarios, the training, and, you know, all these other scenarios that resulted in 60%, almost 60% of the time, only having one deputy, I didn't want to hear that. You guys had an obligation and responsibility to fulfill the conditions of that contract. And we were guaranteed. We were guaranteed, at least we were guaranteed two deputies as part of that contract, patrolling the town of Southwest Ranches, seven days a week and 24 hours a day. So when I heard that, I was shocked and I was surprised. And what came out of it essentially is that if you want us to guarantee two deputies, which is part of what the commitment was when we negotiated this contract, you have to hire two more. So now I have to hire two more deputies to ensure that we have two all the time patrolling in the town of Southwest Ranches. And some of your, the reasoning, the explanations, you know, I guess made sense from your perspective. But from my perspective, this is, again, the most important service, the most important service that any municipality can have. And when I heard we only had one deputy patrolling this town 58% of the time, I was shocked. I was absolutely shocked. The other thing that's very, very unique about the situation with Davie, the fact that they've created three districts. They've guaranteed us three deputies the weekdays and two on the weekend. That's three deputies, five out of the seven days and two on the weekends. And the analysis, as a part of the reason for this recommendation, is based upon calls. Very, very impressed with the negotiations and the presentations. But three deputies means a lot. That being out there patrolling, that visual deterrent, you know, talking to the neighbors. That's the way it was at one time. I mean, they would stop and talk. They would see the deputy driving down the street. I saw Deputy McCormick driving down the street. We would talk. You'd stop and talk, you know, and we would see that. So there was this environment that existed, that hometown warm and fuzzy feeling that is unique to the town of Southwest Ranches. And I just don't feel it anymore. And with regards to the cost, you know, Don, you're not too far off. What's the difference between 2.3 and 2.145? Well, there's a big difference in my mind, you know, quite frankly, because it provides an additional option potentially if this council decides if they want to go a different route. And that is, at the end of the contract, we're going to own those vehicles. I know they have a lifespan of eight years, but we're going to own those vehicles. And while I would not be supportive of it, because I just, the town, I don't think is in a position to be able to fund it or afford it. But you do have an opportunity now that if you wanted to start your own police force, and I know we have some retired police officers here in the town of Southwest Ranches. I know, and I'm looking at you, Rich. You'd be one of the first ones that I would select, I have to tell you. But I know we have a lot of police officers here in the town of Southwest Ranches that, you know, potentially there's an opportunity to create our own, if in fact that that was an option. So it's an option moving forward that I think that is, you know, very, 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 very positive. So again, BSO, wonderful organization. Outstanding deputies, outstanding administration. Have done a wonderful and remarkable job and very appreciative of all that they've done for us. And I'm inclined to go along with the sentiment of this council. I mean, everything that you said certainly makes a lot of sense.
Can I join you just one minute?
It's a confirmation of what reality is. So, absolutely.
Between what you said and what Freddie said, I wanted to throw one other thing in there. This commitment that they've offered to us or whatever to handle three zones, three guys, remember, Davie's in the middle of our town and part of our town. They have guys here anyway. So we're not just going to have those three guys because they have coverage already within their town, within their own area. So we're going to have really, technically, more than that. So it's more bang for the buck than what it is on paper just to us because they are centrally located in the middle of town. The plaza's there, Chelsea next to you is there, on the other side of, on Dyke Road over there next to Hawks Bluff, you know, on Sterling Road on the other side down there, that development. So they're already within town. So I don't know what their staffing is, and maybe we can find out what that is, Andy, possibly, what that coverage is, just so we know how they're covering that now in that regard. Because to me, because they are centrally located within town, if we're getting this commitment and they already have their coverage for the rest, it's really more than three guys on the street at those times. So me personally, I'd like to make a motion for the town administrator and the town attorney to move forward with negotiating a contract and bring it back to us as soon as possible for Davie.
Second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Counsel?
I said all I could say.
Yeah, we pretty well said a lot here. And, you know, we need to leave it up to the negotiating committee to hammer out the best deal we can get, you know, for our residents. They deserve the best, you know, and we need to go for that.
Need to quit kicking the can down the street.
Yeah, I mean, these extensions are just, it's just, I don't want to say driving it crazy, but I mean, you know, it's just on and on and on and on. We need to put this, we need to take the politics out of the game. We need to get into, you know, the public safety aspect of it.
I just want to make sure that all your questions and comments have been addressed, you know, moving forward. And as part of this process, there'll be more discussions. There'll be more negotiations, I am sure. But we have a motion and a second on the floor to commence negotiations with the town of Davie for police services. And seeing no further questions, although Steve, you do have a question.
I apologize.
No, that's all right. That's why we're here. Absolutely. It's an important decision.
Before we kind of close this out, Andy, I just want, from you, can you just walk us through what the next steps are then in this process? Assuming, let's assume we vote in positive for the motion that's on the floor right now. But as far as both from the BSO side and the Davie side, what can we expect, say, in the next 30 days to 60 days, somewhere in there?
Okay, from what I understand, from the motion, and I'm glad you're asking me because I do want to clarify that. Should you vote affirmatively, it sounds like the direction from council will be for Keith and I to put a contract together with Davie. We've had discussions. We've talked about general terms and staffing. But to go ahead and draft a formal contract
Yes.
to bring back before you with, I would assume, a presentation from Davie so that you can see and hear from them, is that the direction?
Okay, I think that was my-
For my motion, yes.
Yeah, and that was my understanding as well. I just wanted to be clear on it.
From a timeline standpoint, I would imagine that could probably be done certainly in the next two to three weeks. It's hard for me to certainly speak for them at this point. But based on conversations I've had with them, that could be done in the next two to three weeks. It might potentially necessitate calling a special meeting for you to do that. Because recognize, we have one meeting in November that's on the calendar now. But I would follow up with them tomorrow morning to get some sense of what their timeline would be to do that.
Okay, and is there anything on the calendar at all from BSO?
We have no meeting scheduled with them at this point. They did give us, as I spoke to before, they bettered their offer to us yesterday. You know, absent direction from the council to proceed there, I would say that that would be certainly the back burner at this time.
Okay, I guess, I think we're going the right direction. But I want, from my perspective, I want to bring the best two offers to the table. So from my perspective, I would not be cutting anything off on BSO's standpoint. If they want to continue the conversation, from my standpoint, I would, you know, I would prefer to continue the conversation. Let's make sure we've got their best offer. As I mentioned in my comments, there was something very specific that I think was on the table, was promised to us, was taken off of the table. I would be very interested to see if that would go back on the table or not. Because I think that's a critical piece. And so I want the two best contracts to look at and make the best decision we can. I guess that's what I'm saying. If, and I have not been part of the negotiations, so I'm not assuming anything. If the negotiations are still open, then the negotiations are still open. If the negotiations are not open, then I understand that as well. And then we've got their final best offer. I just don't know which, where we are with that.
I have a different question if I could join you, Steve.
Yeah.
We have BSO here right now. Why can't we ask them?
I think that's a well of an idea.
I mean-
I have to, I'm in a position to answer the question.
Absolutely.
Good to see you, Greg.
Andy Howard. For the record, my name's Major Greg Page. I'm for our sheriff's office, part of the sheriff's command staff downtown. And as a lot of you are aware, I was also the chief out here in Southwest Ranches for quite a period of time, along with District Gate up the road. Councilman, to address your issue with the unincorporated deputies that, you know, as you're all aware, the county auditor's report just came out. I'm sure everybody on the dais is pretty much aware of that. And the county's really monitoring our neutrality with our revenues and our contracts. And at this point in time, the unincorporated deputies that are part of the West Broward contingent are not under consideration for contract within the contract of Southwest Ranches.
They were before.
I can't speak for the prior administration. I wasn't part of that negotiating team. I mean, that was under a different sheriff, and it was a different time, and it was a- I'd also like to, while I had the opportunity, the Davie proposal said that you had 14 officers that were guaranteed. I don't want the council to get the wrong impression. It is 13 deputy sheriffs that were in the new contract proposal, but you also have two uniformed patrol sergeants who are also in patrol at your time in your town while they're on duty. So that while those patrol sergeants are on duty, that's a total of three patrolmen that are outside in your town patrolling, and including the district commander that is available for patrol also. And I hope that the district commander, as much likes George Jarboe, who, you know, mayor's a personal friend of mine and who I originally recommended for this job down here, you know, that person as well. So at any given time, normally on a weekday, you do have three marked patrol units patrolling the town of Southwest Ranches under the new contract.
I think the question is, Greg, is this the final offer? I mean, we just came in yesterday and it's 2.3-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
No, and you know what? It's a negotiation process, obviously, with the conversations came in yesterday in 11th hour with the $2.3 million offer. We're still open to continue negotiating. I would hope you give us the opportunity to continue negotiating. I mean, it's nice to get down here in front of the council and see what Davie has proposed to you and see what we can do to, you know, to try to win over and continue your service here. You're well aware, I'm one of those guys that patrol the old unincorporated areas out here. I'm well aware. We know what the community needs. We know how important it is to have your own hometown police department and preserve your rural lifestyle. I mean, we've been a part of that. We want to continue that relationship. And obviously, I don't think we're willing to walk away from the negotiation table at this point. And I'm sure Colonel Pollock here, who's the director of Patrol Services, can confirm that for me as we're sitting here.
Here's the issue that I have, Greg. And again, you're a dear friend of mine. I respect what you do. And you're an outstanding dedicated professional. But here we are at 20 minutes to nine, 20 minutes to nine. We've been involved in negotiations for the last, I don't know, eight months, nine months, 10 months? I don't know how many sessions that we've, that we had. And quite frankly, up until just a few months ago, I mean, essentially, the confirmation was, you know, the concept was a cost-neutral scenario. This is what it is, and there is nothing else that we can do. And here, this council is getting ready to make a decision, you know, based upon the feedback that we get. And, you know, it's very, very late because we just got this offer yesterday. And I spoke to the sheriff. I'm going to give him credit. I spoke to him twice yesterday. I won't tell you 50, what 50% of my conversation was with him. But I will tell you the other part of it because he wanted an opportunity one last time. But here we are getting ready to make a decision. You put the council in a position to ask them to consider and you want to continue to be a part of the process. And this isn't you, Greg. You came on later on. It has nothing to do with you. And then all of a sudden, there's room to negotiate. You know, I have a problem with that. From months ago, two months ago, that this is the final offer to, as we get closer to making a decision, and this council was evaluating these proposals and this information, are ready to make a decision. And all of a sudden, you know, there's an opportunity to continue to negotiate. And I'm telling you, Greg, that was not the impression that we got. That was not the impression that we got from the negotiating team.
I understand. And maybe I misspoke. I misunderstood what you're saying. I apologize to you. I was under the impression we were still talking about the $2.3 million, Andy. My fault. Right now, to provide what you asked for in the negotiating committee, to have your town staff with two deputy sheriffs at 24 hours a day, any given day of the week, and to have two sergeants and your own district commander accountable to your town administrator and your town council, will require 13 deputy sheriffs, two sergeants, district commander, $2.3 million. And no, there's no, I mean, I'd be a fool to sit here and say to you there's any wiggle room to that because at this point, there is not. So if that's the question you're asking me, yeah, that's where we're at.
That's a final offer. That's the question. And really, up until just, you know, a couple of weeks ago, you know, and we were trying to be creative with regards to this contract because we wanted to consummate a deal. You know, and some of the things that were proposed by Keith and Andy, and I contributed probably just a little bit, were unique and unusual and eye-raising at times because when we threw it across the table, you know, those weren't, things were contemplated. We were trying to figure out a way how we could reduce these costs. And, you know, essentially, you know, up until even just two weeks ago, one extra deputy, we still can't guarantee that you're going to have two 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But with the additional two, it's going to cost you almost 2, it's almost 2.5, 2.45 something. If you pay for the two additional deputies, these four will guarantee that you'll have two, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And now here we are, this council's getting ready to make a decision at the last minute. This is thrown out there. It's not fair. You know, this negotiation process has been going on for a long, long time. And it's not fair to put this council in this position. We've worked hard at this process. We've been in intense negotiations over an extended period of time. We, I know that, I'm sure that Andy has passed along that information. And based upon that information, this council is prepared to make a decision tonight. And then all of a sudden, you know, just a few hours prior to us making decisions, things have changed. I don't understand the disconnect there. And why didn't this take place previously when they were, and this is up to two weeks ago, when they were committed and they said, "This is our best offer. You need to hire these two deputies to ensure you get two full-time deputies, but it's going to cost you almost $2.5 million." And then yesterday, we get to reduce $200,000 to guarantee us two deputies. It's frustrating, Greg. It's frustrating. And again, this council is up here, prepared to make a choice and to make a decision. And, you know, now we're being introduced with different variables, and it's just not fair to this council.
Mayor, if I may, I don't want to get into the, digress into the actual details of the negotiations. We were there. I don't necessarily agree with what you're saying. I mean, at the point of the last point of the negotiation, we walked out saying, and we walked on the table, saying we were looking to add one deputy sheriff. we walked on the table, say we're looking to add one deputy sheriff, and that's what we're looking to do. I, I understand that, you know, you mentioned before that we were throwing around different staff instructors, different ideas, which are, and they're all great ideas, we're trying to make things work during Negotiating Committee. But I can tell you this, I sat here, I looked personally at the sheriff, I sat with the sheriff, we looked personally at it. As of right now, to staff your town the way that you desire to have your town staff with two deputy sheriffs, 24/7 a day, it, and, you know, adding the two sergeants, your own district commander, it is $2.3 million, and it will work, it is successful. I mean, we went through a lot of different scenarios during those negotiations. We went through everything from having no command staff to having a lot of sergeants and everything else. But the bottom line is, I looked at these numbers, I looked at these numbers hard over the last two to three days, and it is exactly, you know, what you need and what you're looking for staffing-wise, not monetarily, staffing-wise, to staff the city the way you want to have the cities, the town staff.
I appreciate that, Greg. So it's a confirmation that the final offer is $2.3 million. We appreciate it.
Any more questions?
I guess on that synopsis, I'm not changing my motion.
No, no, I didn't, I wasn't asking. My only point was I wanted to, I wanted to have that exact conversation, so I understood where we stood with both, with both parties. I didn't want to leave here confused, and so I appreciate the, that answered my question very clearly. Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions or comments? Gary?
So we're directing Andy to...
We have a motion in a second to direct Andy to commence negotiations and come up with...
Come back with a contract.
...agreement with the town of Davy for a contract to provide police services here in the Southwest Ranches.
Want a clear?
All right, that's the motion.
Wasn't exact in the motion. At least three requested, respectfully requested Davy to come and do a presentation at that time. So I just want to make sure that's...
Well, let's say, I want you guys to go to, I would like the town administrator, yourself, the town attorney, to meet with Davy, negotiate a contract, and bring a contract back to us, and at that point, if we have questions, to be here related to a presentation, if we want to ask questions, but I'd like you to go negotiate a contract and come back.
Second to the motion?
That was my intention.
Okay. Okay, everybody clear on that? Okay. Got a motion in a second, we're clear what the motion is. Eric, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fizikelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number five, which is public comment.
We did it on the front end, all that.
You'll still have some, and I hear what you're saying, Bob, and as part of the process, that was one of the reasons why we asked for input, we put it on the table, he did the, the presentation, so, and I hear what you're saying, and again, this was a discussion item. We violated Robert's rules, but we shouldn't have, but, but we did. I hear you, you're right. Item number five, public comment. Erica?
The rules for public comment is listed on the agenda, and I'll just read off the names for speakers. Bob Hartman, followed by Manny Hagan.
Well, look at that, there's justice. They're still outside. Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 1nd and 8th Terrace. Mr. Administrator, can you turn up the PA outside? I don't know if the other car yet. It's left. It amazes me that there, it's a done deal. I was going to stand up here and say, I wouldn't support Councilmember McKay's motion to go with Davy without having them have an opportunity to listen to what you just said, hear your passion, take that back to the sheriff, who I'd really like to know why he's not here tonight. This isn't the most important night of the year for him, in his relationship to Southwest Ranches, and he isn't here. When that occurred to me, you know what, Doug, I completely support you. He really showed his, his stripes there. Go for it. I do. At the end of the day, I think if he can't negotiate, here's the part that puzzles me. You're all businessmen, you all understand economies of scale. They both use FRS, they both use the retirement system, so take that off the table as an argument. How is it that, what does BSO have? 30,000 employees, something like that? Some crazy huge number, half the county budget, and they can't commit lower than a city that has, what, a budget of $39 million for their police, and those guys have $700 million, I believe? What's the problem here? A little higher? You say higher? 800 million? But this makes no sense to me. I mean, Davy, totally with him now, I didn't think it was the best idea, I'd really elect to stay with BSO, but the same way that they are dissing our town with the way they're treating us right now, as far as the command structure here, and no longer community-oriented, we just got the same thing here. So I'll miss them, I think they do a great job, but I think they sank their own ship. Thank you.
Manny Hagan?
Manny Hagan, 17901, Southwest 68th Court. I agree with everything that you're doing. So I'm happy, I'm happy with the Davy taking over our fire, and now we'll have police, if the negotiations go good, and then Davy will have their men here for both things, and we'll be in good hands. Thank you.
Rich Hagan? Is he in here? Mark Modrich?
I said all I need to say about this. I just wanted to invite everybody to come out to Rolling Oaks Park on Halloween night. If you don't have any kids, bring some candy and pass it out to the ones that are there. There'll be a couple hundred of them there, I'm sure. You'll, you'll have a good time. Thanks.
Dee Schroder, final speaker.
You are way away. I'm kidding you, it's way out. Dee Schroder, 5501, through Berlin. I would like to say thank you to two people who are not here tonight, and that is Gary Polikoff and Sherry Polikoff. And the reason I'd like to say thank you is because they have given us their son. And without them living in this town, I want to tell you something, each and every one of yous should be scared. This man protects you all the time. He is the best thing since sliced bread. And in case these guys outside didn't hear that, he's the best thing since sliced bread. I still have two minutes left, and it won't take two minutes, but I would like to address this to my town administrator. And something was said tonight about, you know, I agree with you guys all the time. I don't. I really don't. Ask Freddie. I, I just really don't agree with yous all the time. But Andy, this is for you. I think you've done a really good job. I really had my doubts, but I think you've done a tremendous job. And besides doing a good job, I kind of like you too, so that, that kind of helps.
That's a big deal.
I, I really want to talk about something that was very misleading to residents, and I know I spoke to you earlier about this, but I really want to talk about these blue garbage cans. They're blue, very blue.
At least they're not yellow.
I want to tell you something, when you ride down Sunshine Ranches on recycling day, it's like you expect all the lights to go on and the trees to light up, and it should be a holiday. It was very misleading when people came into town hall and they seen them displayed for a long, long time, and they were green. And I think there was somebody that was responsible for that. Okay, I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad you took the blame for it. I don't have to point my finger. So the next time you decide to do blue, you know, kind of, you know, check around and see if people want blue. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Administrator, and our illustrious town attorney. I want to speak to you. My name is Joanne Hollingsworth, I live on Southwest 199th Avenue in the town of Southwest Ranches. I just want to remind everybody out there and across the town that if, even if we do go with Davy, we are still paying a portion of our county taxes. So BSO still would have to respond if we needed certain services, so we're really not losing anything, and we may be gaining a lot. So that's one thing I want everyone to know, because when I moved out here, we were unincorporated, and that was a long, long time ago, and we waited 45 minutes to an hour to get a sheriff to come out to our house or our street, and we were basically told, take care of it by yourself until you get there. Well, we don't have to take care of it by ourselves until someone gets there now. So whichever way we go, we do well, but we still do get county services. As far as the recycling, it's fine, except they came so late at night, on Wednesday night, that we had already pulled our recycling bin in. They came after dark. So that's a bit of a problem with that, that needs to get organized, and I know we spoke to Andy about that earlier. But as far as this, I will be happy with the way your direction is going as far as our services, and I think either way, we will work out quite fine. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Item number six, board reports. Any members of any of our wonderful committees have anything wonderful and special to report? Seeing none, that's very unusual. Let me get the, oh, there's Dee.
Oh, it's me again. This is for the historical board. I, I do realize it's not an actual town board, but we are moving forward with this. We have a meeting this Tuesday. I do have some really great ideas, and hopefully, Andy, you're going to be there, hopefully. So maybe one day you're going to walk into this room and you're going to see oohs and ahs, because we do have some good ideas. So I urge everybody, if you'd like to come to the meeting, you know, some of you council members can come to that meeting, it would be okay. But like I said, we, we do have some ideas, and I spoke to a lady today, I wanted you to know, Andy, and she's very much interested in helping us out and maybe joining this board. She has a lot of artistic talent. Her, her name is Bev Davis, a lot of yous out in Rolling Oaks, probably, no Beverly, and so she's going to help in any way she can. So hopefully, we'll see you at the historical board meeting.
When is that? When is that?
Tuesday, the 29th, Juanita? The 29th.
At?
Oh, yeah, Andy, Andy, Andy. Can, can we get a scanner? Or, or is this going to be something that we have to take and do? And I do know that there are historical grants out there. Yes, December? There are historical grants out there, we can get monies. Yes? Are you working on it? Just say I'm working on it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that concludes item number six. Item number seven, council member comments?
Gary? Yeah, I'll kick us off. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming once again. I'm going to be brief. We've talked a lot tonight and accomplished a lot, and I just want to get back to some fun stuff here. We just recently completed a photo contest, and they're all on display right over here, the winners, and I'd like to congratulate Linda Bryan, our own Bob Hartman here, Kathy Simmons, Chesney Stevens, and Humberto Vidal. They were the winners over there, voted on by the Rural Arts Committee, and you can see they've done a very good job. So we'll look forward to the next one. Just a reminder, this Saturday, October 26th, is the hazmat waste pickup at Rolling Oaks Park. It's in the morning, so bring all your fluorescent bulbs, your computers, whatever, you know, oil, tires, you name it, this is the time to do it. We're going to have four, four each here, and this is it. We've got Halloween coming up in Rolling Oaks Park, provided by the Rolling Oaks Civic Association. That's going to be a lot of fun, we have a lot of fun with that, and I urge everybody to come, that'll be a week from today, on Thursday. November 2nd, we have a food truck event at the Equestrian Park. We're starting to get some use out of our parks now. And it's like from four to eight, and it benefits the scholarship fund for Southwest Ranches, put on by the Education Advisory Board, and we have a lot, we had a lot of fun with that in their inaugural year last year, and we should have fun with that coming up. November 16th is the Parks Foundation, the annual fundraiser, fundraiser for the Astronaut Parks Foundation. That's being held at the Davy Schoolhouse. It's going to be a lot of fun, it's going to be a silent auction, and I'm really looking forward to that. And then December 14th, we have the Holiday Horse Show, and I probably blotted the name, and I apologize if I did, but...
Fun Horse Show.
Huh?
The Fun Horse Show.
Yeah, the Fun Horse Show, that was it. Okay, I'm sorry. And that's, Joanne, what time, what time in the morning is that?
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM, and it's really great, see the kids and the horses out there, and some really great photography opportunities out there. I know I took a million pictures when I was out there last time, and, and it's a lot of fun, and the kids get to show off their horses and their talents, and I think it's really worthwhile for everybody to go to. And I'll wrap it up with that, and with some of the other councilmen. Thank you.
Ready?
Yeah, okay. Firstly, I want to talk about Fish and Hole Park, and really, I'm going to have to go back a little bit on this, so you really know what I'm talking about. But, you know, when we started that whole job out there, I was really in charge of getting the fill out there, really, what it was, and I was kind of halfway looking over Willie's shoulder or some things. But then a few things happened out there. Things started getting to the point where I really felt that maybe you guys were looking at me for something I didn't have. So I called George Morris out there, he's a friend of mine, and like a friend of a lot of y'alls, and asked George to look at a couple of things for me, and one of the first things he asked me, he said, well, what does the ASBIL look like? I don't know what he's talking about, you know, for the property. But really what it is, is before that contractor started the job, he was supposed to come in there and lay out everything by elevations and give him something to shoot for. There was a little bit of that done, but I don't know whether we did it, or he did it, or somebody, it wasn't done properly, but when that happened, I kind of got concerned, so I wrote Keith an email, told him that I felt that I wasn't qualified to answer some of these things, and I needed some help. He talked to Andy, and what we did, we went out, and I don't know how much y'all know about this, we engaged William and Fradley to oversee the job for us. And now, when he come out, and we met with the contractor, and he asked for the ASBIL, well, they didn't have one, so he told them they had to go get one, and they did. When it came back, it really wasn't that bad, but there was a lot of little problems on it, and Willie and him worked with the contractor, and they finished doing, what they had to do was come out and do a whole new ASBIL, which they did. And tomorrow, I understand, they're going to start tomorrow, I think, Willie coming in and correcting the problems. There's no real serious problems, they're just minor problems. If you go out there after the rain, you'll find out that everything's raining pretty well. But Vernon really wanted to make sure, you know, because drainage is going to be our biggest thing on that project, you know, and everything, but it's looking good, it's looking good. If, if he's going to bring a bulldozer in there and start leveling off the few things that he's doing, and they should be, I think we'll start seeing some green, maybe in a week, he'll start laying sod, but we're doing good. We're, we're, we're in good shape. Also, I went out there during the week and mowed the parking lot again, and, but I didn't have time to do the horse trail, so I went there Sunday, no, I went there today to do a horse trail. And I, I went down the western line, went east on the southern line, and come up north on their line, and I couldn't believe what I was looking at. I come on about two acres that was cleared, all the brush and every, it looked beautiful, people, let me tell you something, it's what I really envisioned a park was going to look like in, in the future, but I wanted to get a picture, I went there to try to take a picture with my phone, and I couldn't even find out how to do it, and I asked two experts here tonight. By the way, Bob, he found out how to get the camera, we ain't find out how to work it yet. Anyway, to make our, this thing, it is, the, the contract that these people have not signed... But anyway, to make our, this thing, it's the contract that these people have not signed yet. And it's really kind of confusing to me because I was under the impression that the contractor would come back to us, but after talking to Andy, I find out it doesn't really have to come. I think all of y'all have seen the contract. They haven't signed it yet. There's a lot of things. They've started, in my opinion, prematurely, but looking at what they've done so far, I think it's going to work out. Because I went in there a couple, a week or so ago and cut a trail from east to west on the northern end of this two and a half acres they're supposed to clear with my bulldozer. And while I was there, I realized that I had the wrong machinery in there. What you needed was a track bobcat and I'd even talking to Willie and to our town administrator about, because I've, actually, if you know or not, Emily told me I've committed some money towards doing some work out there and I would even be willing to rent one of those and do. But this guy came in there with one of those machines and did wonders. I mean, he, before, you've seen just roads? There's no roads. It's all flat ground and just a bunch of trees all over the place. Only thing is, December, I didn't see any marks on a lot of those trees that are left. Are some of them going to stay? I hope, I don't know. But anyway, it's looking good. It's looking real good. I still want to see him sign that contract, but I think even if he does what he's done doing, I think he, as far as I can tell, he looked like he pulled maybe six or eight trees is all he's pulled so far, the holes that I looked at. He hasn't covered those over yet, but it won't be any problem doing what he's doing. But I think it's getting there and it's working. I think that it really, what I, my vision was what I seen today, but I know that's not y'all's vision, what y'all want for the two and a half acres, so I'm willing to yield to the majority. The next thing I would like to talk about is the mowing contract. You know, I don't know how much you people travel Griffin Road, but I do it a lot. And especially when I come to town hall, because usually to go home, sometimes I have to go north, east to come back around. But if you come from Flamingo to Seventy-Five, it must be a different mowing company that's doing the mowing than we got from that, from Seventy-Five West, because it's no comparison. There's no comparison. We had a young lady come to the homeowners meeting for Country Estates the other night, a new person in our town. And the first thing she says, "I'm disappointed." She says, "It looks terrible out there. I had a person from Western come over and visit me and she was shocked at what she's seen." I have to agree with her. It does look bad. It does look bad. But after, if you go out there and you look at the two roads, there's really a reason. There's a big medium in that eastern portion and there's a little medium in the western portion. And what happened? We put in a bunch of plants. There ain't room for those plants. They're hanging over the curbs. Half of them are dead and everything. My recommendation would be, let's go in there and have that guy that does the mowing, don't stop when he comes to the plants. Keep mowing. Mow them down. And then, then when the weeds come up, we'll cut them too because they're going to be green and they'll look a lot better. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Thank you. I think that might break our legal agreement with Broward County, but I like the idea. Also, to add on to that, Freddie, actually, coming out of that same Country Estates meeting and based on that same question that that resident, new resident that moved out there had, I did speak with December, or maybe traded emails with December regarding that section of property that is west of 188th. And west of 188th, and December, correct me if I go astray, west of 188th still is Broward County responsibility to cut. So that, east of 188th is our responsibility, west of 188th is their responsibility. And the interesting thing was, December, I think contacted them. Oh, I have gone astray. I have gone astray. December, correct me, please. I knew it. I knew it, you know? I could see it. Yes, yes.
Let me have a look.
Okay.
Because the town was able to put some trail improvements along the C-11 canal. You have to think about the C-11 canal as two parts. One is edge of pavement to bottom of swale and the swale is not really obvious out west as it is out east. But Broward County cuts from the edge of the pavement to the middle of the swale and we cut all the way from Flamingo out past US 27, the canal bank top.
Okay.
So there is a difference there. Broward County still does maintain a portion of that west of 188.
Great.
So you were actually correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for that correction. The other thing, let me just, let me just say this and then I'll let you go. The, it was, so I mentioned that to December, I think we traded emails on that. And December, you said you were going to check with Broward County. The very next day, it was mowed. It was very, so I was pretty impressed.
But on that same thing, December, I happened to bring the contract with me tonight. It says, "Griffin Road, C-11 Canal Bank Trail, top edge of swale to top of Canal Bank, from Flamingo Road to southwest 148th Avenue, Dykes Road to US 27." It's saying he's supposed to mow it.
Which contract do you look at?
Huh? December?
I don't know. Maybe I got the wrong one.
We have a series of maps that were included with that contract, which if we put every document in your contract, you, you know, have a contract this thick, but the series of maps specifically delineated the areas that he didn't mow or that he did mow. Where that's concerned, we took over the C-11 top of bank as a part of our agreement for the OGT trails along the C-11. We took over the Griffin Road section, which is the bottom of the swale to the edge of the pavement, out to approximately where they finished the widening project. Past 188th, no widening. They still maintain that. They didn't have a way of kind of assigning that responsibility of maintaining over to us. So there's still that small section that they do maintain. And even though the contract with Luke's has some verbal information there that can be, you know, a little confusing, the combination of all the specifications and the maps and the tour that we did with all of the people that contracted, they understood that they would not be mowing from 188th west to US 27 on the area where the pavement, between the pavement and the swale, only from the swale to the top of the bank. I'm sorry, it's confusing.
It's confusing.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, December. So the good news there, all that to say that, to use the woman's description of the weeds hanging over the road, those weeds hanging over the edge of the road, they've now been mowed. So there's the silver lining. I wanted to follow up on something that we had talked about a while back, I'm going to say six months or so, and we talked about and I thought we came to a decision and, but I don't think we ever made a change. And that is the process for permissions for putting up signs, for political signs. We're now about a year from the next election. I want to make sure that is cleaned up and cleared up and everybody is on the same page. There's no misunderstanding. I think we ought to, you know, the thought is that, I don't think it makes sense for what we did the last election where everybody has to fill out a whole form. I think we talked about having a sheet that you could just have them initial it and give permission. And so I think that was the agreement of the council. I don't want to speak for the council if anybody disagrees with that.
Yeah, no, I'm on, that's what I recall.
Okay. And, but I don't think we ever made the legal change to that and I think we need to do it ASAP because we are now approaching the election cycle.
One year away.
Yeah.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. And...
I think you've got nothing else to do.
And then the last thing I wanted to touch on, Andy, if you're, if you could please, in your comments, just give us a brief update on where we are with the information that we got from the traffic workshop between 185th and 190th, kind of what the timetable is for that, when the residents can expect some feedback on that. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I've only got really one thing. My wife has decided she, "We're not doing a Halloween party this year or costume party, no." But we are doing open house. So you don't have to come dressed in a costume or anything. And so we're not serving food and drink and all that stuff. She just wants to share the amount of decorations that she has. And those of you that have been to my house and seen the decorations inside and out, it's over the top. And the way she fools me is she shops now through the end of next month buying new cool stuff that comes in and gets delivered by FedEx or UPS and gets stashed away in the barn and I don't see it till it comes out next year. "Oh, I had that." So that's how this stuff keeps growing in my house. If you didn't know any better, you'd think she plants stuff and it comes up out of the ground, but it's, so my house, the only thing she's done exceptionally well, she waited a couple of weeks till she actually decorated for Halloween. So I was thrilled with that myself because all those little gadgets and motion detectors and lights, when they trip inside the house, one will set off another one. So if you get up in the middle of the night to go to the bathroom or go get a bottle of water or drink something, you walk through the house and you trip all this stuff and the whole house is like, "Ooh," you know, making all these sounds and screaming and it'll make you crazy. So she's been very good and not turned all those on until people are coming over, so. But it takes her about an hour to go around and do. So she's got some new added fun stuff. So next Tuesday night, from 7:30 to 9:30, anybody that wants to come to my house, feel free to come and take the tour and check it out or bring your cameras because Bob Hartman can tell you, my house is over the top. And I don't know how the news media hasn't been to my house yet, but they haven't, so.
That's the Historical Society night. I have to choose which one to go to.
Well, I think that would be a great reason after that meeting's over to come, so.
There we go.
I, you know.
You're frightening too bad.
So, but anyhow, so everybody, my house is open to any and everyone that would like to come see it and look at it and tour it and it is something to see. And the next question is, where does she put all that stuff? I have no idea. So anyhow, I'm good. I want to thank the council for the upfront stuff we did earlier regarding to BSO and Davie. I think and I believe we're going to be pleasantly surprised and happy. No disrespect or shame to the BSO Sheriff's Department. I thank them immensely for all the hard work they've done over all the years and we have a lot of respect for you. We just can't afford you anymore and we're sorry. We need to do what's best for the residents and putting more manpower, more feet on the street and getting better coverage with the issues that have been out there that we've had to deal with is the right thing to do.
Thank you, Doug. I don't have any comments. That concludes item number seven. Item number eight, legal comments.
Thanks, Mayor. While this meeting is going on, the City of Pembroke Pines Planning and Zoning Board is considering the Franklin Academy School that's going to be off Griffin Road and a new road that they're building, 207th. Pursuant to the council's request, we are monitoring it. We have an individual at the meeting tonight who's going to speak about traffic and advise that, you know, we're very concerned. Tonight is not the quasi judicial night. This is only the night where it is being recommended to the commission. When it comes downtime to the commission level, we're going to let everyone know to flood their commission as they constantly do ours about this school. For anyone who does not know, it's a, the property at issue was actually owned by Pembroke Pines. And Pines sold it to Franklin Academy, basically guaranteeing them the right to build a school on that property. But what I don't know if Pines knew at the time, and maybe they did and just didn't share it, is the school is 2,600 students, making it one of the largest schools, charter schools ever constructed, especially the largest in that area. So, you know, I know the mayor deals with schools much bigger than that, but for a two-lane road of Griffin and a small 207th, it is going to have a massive impact on the town of Southwest Ranches and I just want to make sure everyone stays diligent on that.
Mayor, can I, quick question. Keith, can you, can you address the, there's, I don't know if it's been formally placed out there, there certainly is the rumor that, that the road is going to have a gate with clickers only for residents of Pembroke Pines to go through on the south side. Can you discuss the legality of something like that?
I don't know how they would do it. The state of Florida is incredibly clear, it's actually not even the state of Florida, it's federal law, that you can't offer a clicker to some and not others. You know, it's a complete violation of federal law on equal terms, equal protection and as a result of it, if they do offer clickers and it's not a private area, meaning if it's a private road, they can do whatever they want, meaning not the city, but if residents actually own that road, they can do whatever they want. But the City of Pembroke Pines is not legally allowed to just give clickers to its residents. You know, maybe they're doing it in hopes that most of our residents wouldn't request them, but that could be part of it. But anyone who wants, if it's a city road, gets.
If it's, if they make it into a private road, is it legal to...
I don't think the school's going to be on that road.
If Franklin Academy owns the road...
Right.
And they gate their own road, then they can distribute clickers to whomever they want. It's a private road. It's equivalent to you having a gate at your house.
And they can, they can pick whatever criteria they wish to do that.
The private property owner could. Now, if the private property owner, I mean, I could have legal arguments on this all night. I could make an argument that a charter school is a quasi governmental entity and as such, they need to abide by the same regulations as the state entities.
Well, that's kind of where I was going.
Right.
I mean, I can understand an individual, but this is a, yeah.
And as I said, I think we can have arguments if it comes down to that. We have contacted seven traffic engineers at this point. Only one has agreed to assist us in the project. All the others have been retained by Pines, want to be retained by Pines or otherwise. He was just retained today by myself and he's watching it for the first time at the meeting. Again, as we get closer to the commission meeting, we will know the entire picture of what's transpiring here. But from a public standpoint, the time that we'll need public to show up is going to be at your commission meeting and more importantly, at the county commission meeting because it's a plat, so it goes before the county commission.
What about the ca... Excuse me. What about the contamination related to that site, we believe is on there?
Again, they claim that they've done a phase one, phase two and that it hasn't revealed any environmental issues. You know, we can say it from today to tomorrow, but if they have testing, otherwise, that's what they have. So tonight's the first step, it's preliminary. There was barely any backup on it for the first time in history. Pines actually charged me for a records request, which Erica, be happy to know you can do it back to them in the future. So, because they finally realized that we realized what was going on there, you know, and they thought it had been quiet for a while. Want to speak briefly about the BSO-Davey contractual negotiations because I remained totally quiet to hear what the council had to say during that period of time. The council is correct that this debate started moons ago, you know, with the old chair. We were almost ready to sign a deal and as Vice Mayor properly points out, it included the addition of two unincorporated deputies. For anyone in the public who doesn't know the issue, Weston's been given, for the life of their contract, eight additional officers, six deputies and two sergeants, you know? Their goal was to patrol the unincorporated area of Broward County. The irony is, is that 27%, almost 30% of all calls in the unincorporated area took place in our portion of the unincorporated area. So as a result of that, we said, "This is ridiculous." You know, if we're responding to the calls, we want a minimum of two of those deputies assigned to the town. Lombardi had put it in writing. We have a contract, you know, that they proposed with that language in there. The problem came is that it was election time and Lombardi basically didn't want to push that forward in fear for losing the vote of Weston because he was pulling two of their officers away and giving it to the town of Southwest Ranches. officers away and giving it to the town of Southwest Ranches. Many people speak about the photo of Jeff covered with champagne and the sheriff covered with champagne on election night. Many people don't know the fact that we went over there, you know, shortly after Mayor Nelson's victory party to ask the sheriff directly, this was the deal that's on the table. We want to consummate this deal, you know, let's get this done now that this election is over, okay? Tony Vincent was there, the mayor was there.
I was there.
Councilmember McKay, Ryan McKay, they didn't say anything, by the way, they were listening. And I'll ask Councilman McKay, do you remember what the sheriff's response was that night?
Whatever you want.
Whatever you want, okay? So, when we first met, went to a meeting with the sheriff, it was under the condition that we're simply going to sign the contract that was already in force, you know, right before the election. It was a done deal. It was drafted, you know? It was a done contract. We got there and everything changed, okay? There was a one portion of BSO that remotely felt the same from sitting in meetings with the Castillo's to, you know, just a total different version of what BSO looked like. In the entire time we've negotiated this contract since the new administration, one time, the sheriff showed up for about a half hour, shorter, Andy's saying, he came to advise us that our chief had quit, okay? Because she didn't tell us, you know, so he wanted to tell us that she had retired. And then we said, okay, we're ready to discuss the contract. I'll let the mayor tell you what happened when we said we're ready to discuss the contract.
See, now you put me on the...
Yeah. He stood up and left, okay? He stood up and left the room and did not have any further communications. He said, you're with my wonderful staff, you know, they'll handle you properly. If any of you were to ask the mayor or to Andy, I was a major proponent of BSO, okay? I told them, this is crazy. Let's get this deal done, you know? There's too many other issues in the town to worry about now that to worry about creating a new police services agreement with the town of Davie. That was totally my position, you know? I said, you know, they've been here a long time, they know the town, let's get it done. The negotiation was virtually impossible. There was no negotiation. Everything we threw out there, everything, and Rich, you brought up things that I brought up, you know, eight, nine months ago. Let's get rid of a sergeant, add two deputies, you know? Add two CSAs and get rid of a deputy. We threw out everything. It was, this is the deal, take it or leave it, this is the deal. So much so, that on October 1st, okay, after we've gotten nowhere for months and months, I sent an email to BSO. Now, the reason I'm reading it on an iPad is because this email only went to BSO and it wound up on the Sunset and a website, and I promise it wasn't from me, okay? And the question was, do we need to meet again? And I said, you know, there's no need to meet then. The last time we met, you all were going to relook at the numbers as this is a new agreement and should not look back to May. I want to explain what that means in case anyone doesn't know. The sheriff's office was taking the position that we should be paying what our BSO staffing looked like in May of 2013. I argued that half the staff is gone from May of 2013. It's a new contract, we need to be paying the actual number, not the number in 2013, okay, of May. We are starting anew and should look at the actual cost. Further, the two deputies per shift are easily fillable with reserves and other units already paid for by BSO, meaning you guys can guarantee us two people at all times, this is crazy. If BSO is not looking into these two issues, a meeting would be pointless as there does not appear to be anything further to discuss. It appears that we have your final offer, okay? BSO decided to trash me in the Sunset and a by releasing that email saying that I didn't want to negotiate. I wanted to negotiate. I offered them two things. A, drop the dollar amount to the amount of our actual services, A, and B, guarantee us two people on shift, okay? Instead, they attacked me and said, you know, this email shows he doesn't want to negotiate with us, you know, and they're going to Davie. What happened yesterday, okay? The mayor speaks to the sheriff, you know, after a very uncomfortable night, the night before, and the sheriff came back with, we'll charge you 2.3 million, so a reduction. Why is it reduced? Does anyone know why? Because they're actually looked at the numbers that we should be paying, not back to May 2013, and we'll give you two people on shift at all time. The exact things that I asked them for, that they bashed me for in the newspaper for asking for. That's what they came back with, you know, yesterday, okay? So, you know, that little bit sums up where we've been in this negotiation process. We went to Davie, I was incredibly skeptical. You can ask, the mayor was skeptical, Andy was skeptical. It's a total different feel when you are with someone who is doing everything in their power to get you to sign on with them than someone who had a feeling that you were forced to be with them, okay? It was the open arms, hugs, what do you want? What are you looking for? What can we do for you? Davie's proposal changed 10 times, 15 times, based upon them listening to us and their understanding that, you know what? We don't need two sergeants and a chief sitting, you know, in town hall all day. Our residents want people on the street. They want to know that they're two officers driving around, you know, during the peak periods. One officer devoted to each district, each zone. And, you know, Rick La Mack, he's going to come here, he's going to show you his crime statistics and show you how they spent hundreds of hours analyzing the town to amass what they're going to propose to the town. And what's so amazing about their system is he said, you know what? Your contract that you're seeking from us is so overkill that our officers are going to be trained to get out of their cars consistently, knock on your residents' doors, introduce themselves to your residents, because part of the contract that he's agreed to, they're not swapping them out unless we want them swapped out. So, the officers assigned to the town are going to be your officers, your community officers. And another thing you want, you know, and I know we didn't get into all this, Andy, so I'm going to give them a precursor of what's to come. They said, do you guys like anyone at BSO? Yeah, there are some great people here. We'll hire them, you know? If you have people at BSO that you want to stay in your town, you know, and they're good BSO officers and you want to keep them here, they're yours. You know, let us know, we'll hire them, you know? It was a complete utter change from what we were dealing with before with, you know, our officer shouldn't be speaking to the town administrator to tell him what's going on in the town, that the chief quit and didn't tell Andy, instead we find out from the sheriff's, you know, months later. I wasn't there, but Councilmember McKay told me that the sheriff had some harsh things to say about me the other night and spent about a half hour disparaging me. I have no ill will to the sheriff, okay, at all, you know? He is in a very difficult job and I wanted to let you all know where some of the ill will comes from. For 168 years in the state of Florida, every municipality thought that they had to either create their own police department or they had to join the county's police department. 168 years. Half of the city attorneys in Broward County had previously issued legal opinions to their commissions that they could not go with the neighbor, they could only go with the county or directly with themselves, okay? So, after 168 years, this little town of 8,500 says, look into this issue. We looked into the issue and I said, you know what? All these attorneys are blatantly wrong. The prior attorney general who ruled on this is blatantly wrong. The law is clear, the constitution is clear, this is legal. So, as a result of that, your council took a leap of faith and said, you know what? Let's ask the attorney general if this is indeed correct. And you know what? She came back after 168 years and said, you know what? You're 100% correct. You can contract with your neighboring municipality. Well, if you are the sheriff at the time that this occurs, you know, and you have an attorney of a municipality of 8,500 who just rocked your entire world, you know, just changed the face of law enforcement as you've known it forever, what would you say, you know? So, I have no ill will, no hard feelings. I think Sheriff Israel is in one of the hardest jobs in Broward County. He's doing a great job with crime fighting. They're a wonderful organization. Do I think it was appropriate to go to a resident's house and it attacked me a little bit, Jeff, you know? No, but, you know, to each their own. I think he probably felt his back was a little bit against the wall. One other thing that he said that night that Councilmember McKay told me that I want to bring up, and I promise I'm speeding this up. The Mayor Nelson, some of you know, got a lot of suspicious envelopes sent to his house, okay? A lot of people know, and I'll say it, that Mayor Nelson moved, okay? If anyone wants to know where he moved, ask him. He still is a resident of Southwest Ranches. He lives very close to Dee now. They can share sugar. But, you know, yeah, granulate. If you were home and got that many letters, you know, that your wife opens that were empty, empty, you start getting a little bit suspicious, especially in this day and age, you know? The mayor did the right thing. He turned it over to BSO and said, what is going on here? You know, you know, this is either a threat or something. It was in the middle of the accident that happened on 27th. There was a lot of threats going on. A lot of you don't know the types of emails that this council gets on a consistent basis. So, Mayor Nelson called BSO and called the detective and said, what's happening? And the detective told him, we're doing good. We got partial prints, we got DNA, okay? He said, partial prints and DNA? Yes, okay? And he said, that's good. We now need you, mayor, and your wife to come down to give your prints so we can cancel those out and actually determine who did this, okay? I thought that was a wonderful thing, you know? Here's BSO after what happened with Marco, you know, doing an amazing job finding out who did this to our mayor and basically threatened our mayor, you know? Finally, BSO did a good job. So, I said, great job to BSO. I posted, I said, great job, BSO, for, yeah, for coming closer to finding the person who sent Mayor Nelson the envelopes, okay? When you compliment someone and they take that compliment to be, you just compromised my entire investigation and, you know, how could you say that we're doing a good job on this case? You know, how dare you do that? It shows that even more so, that this relationship has gone to a situation where because we got this AG opinion, because, you know, we now gave every municipality in the entire state of Florida an option, a freedom to choose, okay, that we are the bad guys. I am the bad guy, definitely, for looking at the law and not going with my colleagues, you know? And I appreciate it, you know? Do I, I think it was wrong, yes, but it's time to move on. You know, I told Andy, if the sheriff wants to call me and apologize, he can do so anytime, you know? My cell number's public, it's on every email I send, you know? I doubt it will happen, you know? I commend your council tonight for making an incredibly difficult decision. I don't want anyone to think that this is not a very difficult decision to make. Each one of them have met hours and hours with Andy discussing these options. I think the residents here are going to be utterly impressed, shocked, and incredibly happy when they finally get to see what we knows in the works from the town of Davie and the type of law enforcement services that they would provide our town.
Thank you, Keith. You sure you want to have comments there, Andy?
I'm not direct...
How do you follow that one?
I'm sure I can't follow that, Mayor.
Item number nine, administration comments.
Just a, I'll be very brief this evening. I do want to talk a little bit about the Davie versus BSO negotiations. And I will tell you that as your administrator, I approached both organizations with the intent of negotiating the best deal that I could on behalf of the town and bringing that before you, as I did tonight, really as fairly and as impartially as I could. I wanted to just lay out the facts for you. I believe in this case, the facts spoke for themselves, given the situation. You all made, as Keith had said, a very, very difficult decision and I commend you. I mean, I've said to people, you know, regarding this, there are five votes on this and I'm glad I don't have one. Happy to bring you the information. I will tell you and say that as, having sat in those negotiations and really those have gone on for as long as I've been here. I mean, it's just been ongoing and ongoing and ongoing. I will tell you that negotiations with Davie when we sit down at the table versus when we sit down with BSO have a completely different feel. And that's not to slight BSO, they've been, they've been very professional in those negotiations, but I will say it's been much warmer, much more positive in the meetings that we've had with Davie. They've been, you know, I've built up a great relationship with their town administrator who is a former police chief, so that is his background. You may not have realized that, but his background is in law enforcement. He understands this issue, it's one that's near and dear to him. They've really been a pleasure to work with. And I will say that entering into a contract and proceeding into a potentially a five-year deal is certainly a partnership for me. It involves cooperation, it involves trust, and I will tell you that I'm very comfortable working with the administration in Davie. And I will let you know, I did call their town administrator earlier and let him know what transpired this evening, and he and I will follow up tomorrow and, you know, we'll go forward from there. There were some comments made before about the recycling bins, just a couple, just very briefly, the color blue is, that's the standard color for recycling bins now. Some of the old colors were yellow or red. We might have, might have had the opportunity to do that. We went with the blue. The blue is, I'll say, less obtrusive than red or yellow would have been. When you drive down the street, they jump out at you. But trash cans are black, they're gray, they're green, they're putty, there's all different colors for trash cans. But when you drive down the street, you can sure, sure as, you know, see those recycling bins. So, they jump out and that's the purpose of that color. So, that's why they're blue. I know that we had sample bins, three bins that were in town hall, which were green. I'll take the responsibility for that. Those were here really to show the size and, you know, I certainly apologize if there was an expectation on color based on those, but our concern there was, was that people understood the sizes that were available to them, what the standard was, and if they wanted to change. So, that was the reason we had those in. Those were actually trash cans, which is why they're green, they're not recycling bins, but they were really only here to show the size. The political sign-up sheet for signs, Vice Mayor, you mentioned that earlier. I know you and I had spoken about that. I've worked with Erica to kind of modify that forum and I think at this point, you know, certainly given your direction, that's something for us to get in front of the council and I'll work with Keith on that to make sure that we're on the right track, certainly with enough lead time to not have any issues. The traffic workshop, we had a very, very good meeting on October 3rd. We heard from, we probably had 50, 60 members of the public here. I would say that the vast majority were very positive and very cooperative. We got some great notes out of that. We've transcribed those notes. We've provided that to the traffic engineer. I'm just finalizing the agreement with him now, and I'll say that that would have been done had I not been a little preoccupied with the police services issue over the last few days, but I would expect I'll have that finalized with him probably tomorrow or Monday. They will start on their, on their recommendations. We're going to blink and we're going to be into the holidays. So, rather than roll something out too soon and have our crowd a little distracted, I would imagine in very early in January, we'll be able to have a public meeting and share some of those results and that allows us to really put some, some price tags on some of those things and some timelines. So, you know, I'd like to have it next week. It's going to take, you know, a little bit of time to put that together, but just, you know, you and I have spoken about this and we're going to kind of set up four categories on their recommendation. Immediate improvements would be zero now for six months. From six months to two years would be short term. We have an intermediate and then a long term, depending on those projects, what the costs are, the engineering, et cetera, what's involved in that. So, I think it's going to be a very, very detailed response, coming back from the traffic engineer about what can be done, what those costs are, what those timelines are, but I think, I think the public's going to be very pleased to see some things upfront that'll be a little bit more quick.
Okay. I know, if I can, just for a second, I'm going to mention in my article that I write for the newsletter, but I think if we can put something also, just generally with the timeline is, and I feel like we really need to give the residents some feedback on that in any way we can because I don't want there to be a perception that things are not getting done, that that was so...
I'll draft an article for the December newsletter. And last but not least, if you're looking for me next Tuesday evening, apparently you'll be able to find me at the Historical Society meeting. be able to find me at the Historical Society meeting.
Thank you, Andy. All right, item number 10, another discussion item, Tisdor. Andy?
Okay, I guess I got another speaking part here. Tisdor is our transportation, surface, and drainage ongoing rehabilitation project. There are a couple of memos that are in that build, in that, in your agenda, that have been part of the backup for tonight's meeting. One is authored by myself, and the other is from Willie Nabong, the town engineer. The Tisdor plan is, I'll say, a three-legged stool. There are three different distinct components of that. The first, the first component would be the engineering, the road inventory, and what needs to be done. I know Willie's going to be able to speak to that. He's been working with King Engineering on that study. There is information from his memo that, from the, from the King report, which is in his memo as part of your backup. I do not have the report for you this evening. I was hoping to be able to do that. King took a little bit longer than I might have liked. We do have one, one very important interim step that I will not overlook, and that report was by council direction to go to the Drainage and Infrastructure Advisory Board, though they will have their, their shot at it, to go through it, answer whatever, address whatever questions they have. And Willie serves as the liaison to that board, so I know he'll work through that with them. So there is information from, from that report that's referenced in Willie's memo, and I know he's going to be able to speak to that, should you have any questions on that. The second leg of the stool is, is the legal aspects, and that deals with road rights-of-way easements, whether we have those, whether we don't have those, whether residents might be willing to give those to us, and when they don't. And, and those legal aspects need to be wrapped up, looked at, and wrapped up well in advance. Legal needs to run probably about a year ahead, because when we get started on our repaving, we want to look at certainly the roads that need it most, but we also want to take advantage of geographic efficiencies when our contractor, our eventual contractors in a certain area. We certainly want to be able to work through that and not have them hopscotching all over town. So there are, there are legal issues that need to be addressed. Willie and I met with Carol Colicchi from Keith's office yesterday, went through some of those things. That is a separate discussion, and I know we're going to touch on that shortly. The third leg of the stool is the funding. And I've outlined some options for you and some timelines. And the concerns, the concerns there, ultimately, you've really got two options. Do you want to do ad valorem taxes, or do you want to do a special assessment? If you want to do ad valorem taxes, that's something we can handle through the budget process next year and begin work as late as next year. Some of you have expressed from the dais in the past, the desire to potentially go to referendum and allow residents to weigh in. Should you elect to put that before the residents? For example, say, would you prefer we fund Tisdor via ad valorem taxes, or would you prefer the assessment route as, as a, let's say, a ballot question? That would be something that could potentially be on the ballot next November, but with the supervisor of elections for next year's election. The reason we're discussing this now is whether we go ad valorem, and there are notification requirements and time deadlines to the property appraiser. We certainly don't want to miss those. If we're going to go on the ballot, there are different requirements and ordinances that the council must pass in order to get that, that ballot question lined up and notification in proper time to the supervisor of elections in order to do that. And I've outlined those timelines, certainly within the memo that you have. So those are really the three components of the roadway refinancing plan. There were some references, as I said before, in Willie's memo that are pulled from that, including, and I want to address this, you know, certainly very quickly, King Engineering had outlined what they, what, and they proposed a 10-year cycle. We have talked about from this dais, a 15-year, a 20, a 25-year, depending on how that funding falls. Obviously, that's, will be a decision, even though it's in the memo, it was pulled from the King document. It's not a recommendation from staff at this point. That's very much a council decision, once you have that final report and have the ability to look at it. And that's really what I wanted to kind of put on the table to begin the discussion, Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. If I can just add, add something to that, basically, I know this has been a lot of work. It's been a large effort, because it's a very, very large project. I think, based on Andy, on what you've said, I think the wise thing, as you said, there's a three-legged stool. I think the engineering piece, I would prefer to really not focus on that tonight. I think that's going to, King's going to finish up their thing. It's going to go to the board, and then it'll come back to us, and we can have a separate discussion on that. I think the two that we really need to discuss tonight are the legal and the funding, those two pieces of it. And so from, from our, from our standpoint, I wanted, I would like to talk about legal. I don't know if there's a preference, one way or which way we start, but if we can just start with legal. My biggest concern, there's really two parts from the legal part that I'm, that I'm concerned about. Part number two is kind of what Andy said, which is, we need to keep a year ahead of the cycle, so that when we're ready to do the paving, we already have all the rights-of-ways, and we, we're not, that's not holding us up. That, once we, the ball gets rolling, I think that we can, we can do that fairly smoothly. The part one to that is determining how we're going to get these rights-of-ways. We've talked about this. I know the Drainage Committee has talked about it numerous times. I know at the council level, we've talked about it. We've never really come up with a clear way to do this. You know, there's going to be, from a town standpoint, there's going to be a wide variety of responses to this. There's going to be some folks that will welcome it, you know, to finally get rid of that liability for that, that road. They'll welcome it, you know, and say, "Hey, you know, if you're going to take that away and pave it for me, you know, more power to you." There's going to be some folks that are hesitant about it, and there's going to be some folks that flat-out say, "You ain't doing it on my road, you know? You're not, you're not taking away my thing." And I respect all those responses, okay? But what we have the obligation to do is to pave the roads. And so we need to start, we need to start the process of getting resident input, discussing these different options, and determining how we're going to accomplish this, so that we can pave a road from beginning to end, and not have a checkerboard, or not ignore that road, even though it's, it's a, you know, it needs to be done, it should be on this next cycle, but we can't do it because we don't have the plan for getting the right of way. So I don't think that this is going to be a quick conversation. I think this is going to be a difficult conversation, but it's one that we're going to need to go through if this is going to be successful. So I would actually think that we need a, I think, yeah, I was going to, exactly. I think we need a special meeting for it, but I think going into that special meeting, Keith, what we need is, is, you know, your thoughts on, you know the town well, and, you know, your thoughts. I'd like to sit down with you and talk about it, and come up with different options, basically for the council to look at, so that we're not just flying blind into this. We have, we know that what we're talking about is, is at least doable and reasonable, maybe done elsewhere, and we can, can look at some things like that. So that's, as far as the legal side, that's kind of what I'd say the next step.
Freddie?
Yeah, Keith, my question would be just, I know, back when we first became a town, this is something irritated me a little bit. Anytime we borrowed money, we didn't go before the people. And one of the things, when we used to go to League of Cities, I sit on a, on a meeting, and this was discussed. And I asked the lady there, I said, "What determines that?" And she says, "What you pledge to support that." So what I'm asking here now, we don't have any spare money in the fees or in the ad valorem taxes. So what we would have to set, one of those two up, and if we did set it towards ad valorem taxes, we have no choice. Am I not right? You've got to go before the people. If you do pledge the fees, you don't have to go before the people. So how, in other words, we're going to have to borrow the money, and we've got to put up collateral, and we've got to say one or the other.
I'll jump in quick, and then I know Andy wants to say something, or Marty can even say even more. I didn't see you over there. Marty, you've been quiet tonight. A couple of things, and I want to make sure we're not mixing apples with oranges here. You could pay for roadway work through your ad valorem revenue in general, meaning you could do a millage increase at some point, at some year, to pay for roads. That does not require a vote of the electorate. You could do a special assessment on a particular roadway and say, "Okay, we're doing this roadway first. We're going to special assess the owners and have them pay, you know, on their next tax bill." That does not require a referendum. What you're referring to is a bond that would not be pledging ad valorem revenue, and by the virtue of having that sort of financial instrument, you would have to go out for a referendum of the electorate to see if they would approve such issuance. We've never done one in the town. Marty, did you do one in your prior municipality?
No.
Right, but not a referendum for a non-ad valorem-backed bond?
Hi, for the record, Martin Sherwood, Town Financial Administrator. From my understanding is, for non-referendum on special assessment, I'm not sure whether we would need to go to...
We wouldn't for that.
Okay. But for the options that were presented by Andy tonight, the 1A, I know concern by Councilmember Fisickelli was pledge, okay? When you, in order to have a dedicated pledge, that's correct, you need referendum, except for a non-referendum special assessment, which has a special statute under Chapter 170. So the pay-as-you-go, the revenue would stream, would be coming in annual. But, and we could only do improvements as the revenue stream is derived, which is on an annual basis. As the engineering report comes in, when it's found out the total cost, $10 million, if we wanted to proceed any quicker, we would not be able to, because we'd only have $1 million in revenue. So we couldn't proceed quicker with the, a project if we, if we proceed on a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning we have to stage it based on the revenue that comes in.
Hopefully, that answered the question. Depending on how you all decide to finance it is going to dictate...
So, so I think, I think what Freddie was really asking, we talked about a lot of things, and I'm sure in the middle of that was the answer to his question, but I think the bottom line, Freddie, you can disagree with me, but I think what he was asking is, what are the specific conditions where we would need to go to the refer, to the...
I will, I'm going to lay it out in writing.
Okay.
Okay, so that everyone's looking at the exact...
Okay, just, I think, I think we want to be clear on that.
And we'll, we'll do that. I want to break down the, the different financial options with Andy and Marty, and we'll specify in a different color which option would require a referendum. Okay? So that everyone knows.
Can I step in? I believe what we want to do is, once we get all those numbers and that information and know what the cost is, that we want to have some sort of bond and a dedicated fund to pay it over that course of time, whether it's 10, 15, 20 years, whatever it is. I mean, because if we wait to get the money, like Marty was just saying, we're going to be forever to get that done.
Well, I disagree with you there, because I think, and I'm not proponing, you know, I'm not, I don't have the numbers yet, so I certainly am not proposing that we go one way or the other. But what I am saying is that if, if we were to say, do it through ad valorem taxes, increase the millage, if we were to go that rate, either, any way you look at it, we're going to be doing, funding a certain amount each year. Let's say, let's say it's, it's $750,000 a year, which sounds like it's going to be kind of the ballpark number, somewhere around there. So if we increased, whether we borrowed, whether we did a bond and got $8 million in, and then divvied it out over X number of years, or we increased the millage rate to get $750,000 a year, either way, we're going to have that funding in there, and we would, you know, we would do what we need, what we could do, what the plan would dictate we would do that year. So I think we would do, it wouldn't be like we would be saving the money for X number of years and then doing it. We would be getting that money that year, putting in a special fund that would only go towards this project, and then expend it all that year for that project that year. So, so I think that would, I think that would work. I'm not saying that's the way we're going to go.
No, no, no.
I'm just saying that that's a workable way to do it.
Right, right. What I was getting at is, when we know what that number is, because we're flying blind right now, because we have no clue, but if that number comes in and it's $12 million, you know, if we have a fund way to say, "Okay, you know, we're going to borrow the $12 million, and we're going to commit this fund or this amount of money every year to pay that debt," we can move forward and spend that $12 million until it's done.
Right.
So that's all I was getting. We've committed the funding to how we're going to pay it back, and know how we're going to do it, and if we can go get the money, which, that would probably have to go as a valid item to be able to take that action, you know, to borrow that kind of money.
Yeah.
But if we did, we could start the project, and it doesn't stop till it's complete.
Yeah, but we would still want to do it over the X, the years of time, because that's critical to the fact...
The life expectancy of the road.
Exactly, exactly. And that we don't have great roads now, in one year, and then 15 years from now, all the roads are crappy, and we got to...
Well, they're not going to all be the same, because, like, my road is, was never paved, ever. So actually, you know, if you, if you redid it with the old oil and gravel like they were, I think they held up better based on the traffic. I mean, depending on where we live and what, what our traffic is on our roadway, is what it's going to be. I mean, we've increased the life expectancy because we installed those gates out west without cut-through traffic, so, you know...
But did you take into account the Halloween traffic on your road?
No, no, yeah, that's just, what about the, what about the Christmas traffic? Yeah.
Mayor, yeah, I just want to answer Councilman Fisickelli's question better, because Marty showed me that you actually were presented the information, and I wasn't sure that you had it in the backup. If you, he broke it down very well. He did it based on ad valorem tax, if you increase your ad valorem tax, and he did it based on special tax assessment, a special assessment. The only way you go to a referendum on an ad valorem is if you're doing a bond, and you need those revenues, the bond revenue, to be on the tax bill, okay, and be paid on the tax bill. Then you have to go out for a referendum. That means that the dollar amount that the municipality is getting, they're getting the money up front, and as a result of that, it's, we're guaranteeing that it's going to be on everyone's tax bill. And that's how the bonding company is going to get paid back. In that case, it has to go out for a referendum, because everyone's voting for it to be put on its tax bill, okay? That's in category one. In category two, the special assessment tax, it's not required at all in the special assessment. Marty threw in here, basically, that you could do it if you want to. And that is the case, but it's not legally required.
One thing I found out in the process, when we became a town, they're very lenient, because we borrowed $5 million, and we pledged the fees. We borrowed $2.5 million, pledged the same fees again. Then we borrowed some more, and I said, "Wait a minute, you're wearing those fees out." But it seems to be that, when I asked the auditor about that, he says, "Towns don't have any problems, because all they got to do to get out of debt is raise taxes." It isn't like somebody's in business. They've got to drum up business. Our business is there. We, as soon as we run into trouble, we tell the people, "We got to raise taxes." So they're very lenient when they, when they set these things.
Just to...
Till the next election.
Right, right, till the next election, Steve, you're right. Just as part of this, too, and, you know, you touched on referendum and the different funding mechanisms. My personal position is to do a referendum and let the residents decide what mechanism that they would like to choose to fund this, this project. Give them an opportunity to say what, or confirm, again, a mechanism, whether it's ad valorem via this bond issue, whether it's assessment, but to put that together and let them choose which funding mechanism to, to address this issue, because we all agree it's something that needs to be done, our roads and, and, or need in, are in need of being fixed. Freddie?
Well, you know, if we're talking $10 million, there's no doubt, you know, we're looking at a $10 million budget. We need to ask our people. I mean, you're not going to go out there and borrow $10 million, what your whole budget is, without the people having a say-so, I would hope.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I think, and Mayor, I agree with you 100%. The only thing I would not feel 100% comfortable going out there is asking the question, do we want to do the project or not? Because we have to do the project.
It's just an option of how to execute it.
The option to not pave our roads is not, is not on the table.
You make sure the question's worded...
I just, yep, yep. And so, so I agree with 100% with what you're saying. I agree with that. I do, I do have this thing in the back of my mind, that when you go out and borrow $10 million, $12 million, whatever that number is, and hope to do it over a number of years, you don't know what the cost... you don't know what the costs are going to be, what they're going to spiral up to five, six, eight years from now. And also, you're paying interest on a lot of money that's sitting in the bank doing nothing for you. So I am more inclined to do something on a much shorter range of a much smaller amount, you know, so that we're not paying money on interest, and we're not, and we have the costs under control.
I agree, I agree. Okay. Andy, you're hitting your button.
Yeah, Mayor, what I'm hearing from council, at least a partial section of council, is a desire to go to referendum on this. And obviously, the language on some of the funding options will change. But what I'm hearing is, it sounds like we want to go ahead with, and I do want to make sure I have a clear consensus, go ahead with a ballot item, even if it's a straw poll, whether or not you want to fund via ad valorem or via special assessment. And if we're going to do that, that's, you know, that's fine. One of the reasons why I needed to bring this forward tonight is, whatever you choose has timelines associated with it. And if the consensus from council, again, is to put this on the ballot next November, we'll start on the process in order to get that there, you don't necessarily need to make a more formal decision as to funding now, because we've got time to flesh some of that out, as long as we start on that process, put it on the ballot next November. That's really, the most important thing now is that we don't miss our deadlines in order to do that. We've got plenty of time. That's, that's why we're here now.
Go ahead, Freddie.
One thing I want to make sure that people didn't misunderstood what I said. I don't think we need to put on the ballot whether or not we want to go pave our roads. That's a known fact. Only thing I think, if we do that, they need to have a say-so on how we're going to do it. I don't want to see it put on the ballot whether or not you want to pave the roads, because that's our job. We've got to do that for the people.
Right. And frankly, I said that more, I know, Mayor, you were very clear, and Freddie, you were very clear as well. I said that more just to get it on the record, because I think it's important. I don't want anybody from the public to be misled on whether this project is a project that is optional or not. Our roads are a huge liability out there. They're only going to deteriorate further, and this is just something, as a municipality, we have to do.
Yep, just select a mechanism, moving forward upon it.
Yep, exactly.
Agree. Okay. That concludes item number 10, our discussion item. Item number 11, approval minutes for the October 10, 2013 budget hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second approved. Any members of the, the audience have any issues with those minutes? We've had them before, Bob, that's why I ask. Okay, that concludes the public comment. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Call the question, please. Erica?
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
You didn't read it.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And I think this is the first time in the history of the town that I've been an elected official where Noel Hollingsworth had had made no comment. So we must be doing something right, I'll tell you. With that being said, that concludes the agenda. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.